We will be starting at around ten thirty AM. Thank you for your patience. And we hope you have a productive hearing today. Good morning to everyone.
Hindi marinig sila.
Good morning. Renungin po na ako. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll repeat it again. Um, good morning po. Good morning everyone. I am Horace Cruda. I am the committee secretary of the patient committee on public services. We would like to remind our resource persons to observe our house rules, a copy of which was sent to your email addresses together with our invitation. This is to ensure the orderly conduct of our virtual hearing. Further, may we ask our resource persons to turn on your front cameras so that our senators will see your faces during the hearing. Your microphones should remain on mute unless otherwise ordered by a senator or in case a presentation is made or to answer questions by senators. We will be starting at around ten thirty AM. Thank you for your patience and we hope you will have a productive hearing today. Morning to everyone. Good morning Madam Chair and to the other senators. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor.
We shall begin our hearing today. Um. Okay. Good morning. This committee on public services is hereby called to order. Today, we will tackle the franchise application of three telco and thirteen broadcast companies. The three telco franchises include Dito Telecommunity Corporation and Instant Data, which we initially heard last December, and Trans-Pacific Broadband Group International. As for the thirteen broadcast franchises, we have Blockbuster Broadcasting, Tag Bilangan Broadcasting, City Government of Davao, University of the Philippine System, Roland Broadcasting, Cervatron Industries, Christian Music Power, Good News Sorsogon Foundation, Allied Broadcasting Center, Palawan Broadcasting Corporation, Saint Jude Tadeus Institute of Technology, Baycombs Broadcasting Corporation, and Highland Broadcasting Network. So there are a lot of franchises to be tackled today so that uh we can efficiently go through this hearing in the well, in the most reasonable uh time finish our concerns today. I will begin first with the broadcast companies. After which, because I anticipate there will be more questions from our senators for the telco franchises. So we shall begin first with the broadcast franchises. Now for Dito and Instant Data, you're given another opportunity to prove yourselves worthy of a franchise or an extension of the franchise. We expect no less from you with regard to your commitment during the previous hearings. For Dito, first, you supposedly commenced commercial activities two days ago. We would like to know what services you offered, their rates, and how many people signed up or subscribed to Dito's services as of today. We are happy to hear the quick connection reported by users on your first day. We also received reports on phone, but we received reports uh with regards to phone compatibility issues and other weird mechanics like needing to buy a compatible phone to be able to use Dito SIM immediately. And if not, the user has to wait a few days to be able to acquire a SIM card. Users also noted the lack of publicity and marketing on important information about the launch. And supposedly, they can only buy Dito SIMs from one outlet or a certain company. We also want to be clarified as to how Dito determined the areas for the initial rollout. Supposedly, we underserved in Mindanao as per media advisories. But are the initial fifteen areas in Metro Cebu and Metro Davao still underserved areas? Also, do these areas sufficiently meet the thirty-seven percent population coverage commitment? When will Dito's service actually reach the thirty-seven percent coverage? Second, we seek explanation to some matters relating to the procedure and results of the independent audit report. Why is it that only twelve percent of the sample was audited? Is this a global standard? How did you arrive at this rate? And is this approved or recommended by the N P C? It is also important to know if the findings will be consistent once subscribers start using the network. We have invited representatives from R G Manabat and Company, the group who conducted the independent audit, to enlighten us more about their report. Third, we also want to know Dito's preparation for year two rollout as the second audit on July eighth, twenty twenty-one is fast approaching. What has been accomplished and what do we expect from Dito in the coming months? Dito was granted the third player status because it was evaluated as capable of competing with the two other major players. And while we understand birthing pains, we are also looking for marked improvement from the status quo by the present telcos. For Instant Data, we hope you are properly represented this time by someone who can actually speak for your company and is knowledgeable about your company and the services that it can offer. Um. Allow me to reiterate that the grant of franchise is not a right. It is a privilege given to you. New franchise applicants must establish that there is a public need for the surveys they propose to deliver and the means to adequately provide it. To those for renewal, treat the franchise not only as a privilege but as a checklist of your obligations and commitments to the public. We have invited government regulators and stakeholders to determine faithful compliance with the duties and deliverables attached as conditions for the enjoyment of those franchises. As I previously said, sa mga magre-renew, serbisyo muna bago frankisa. While we welcome the coming of more players in the telco and broadcast industry, we want to make sure that all applicants are fit to offer their about public service so as to encourage competition, drive companies to provide better service, and meet end-user expectations. And especially now with the pandemic, what is important also is to provide opportunities and jobs. I would like to acknowledge the presence of our senators, uh virtual presence of our senators. Uh we have our Senate President, Senator Soto. We have Majority Leader, Senator Zibili. We have Senator Goh. Other senators will join us after or maybe if they get a chance uh to excuse themselves from the current committee hearing of the Committee on Appointments. So with that, I would like to ask the uh Committee Secretary to please acknowledge our guests and then their designations as well. Go ahead, please. Uh, to the Committee Secretary, you're muted. Please unmute yourself and repeat.
Sorry, ma'am.
Mukis ulit, please. Wala kami narinig.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Uh from the D I C T, from the Department of Information and Communications Technology, we have Director Jose Carlos Reyes, Cybersecurity Bureau, and Attorney Elias O. Marsana, the Chief Legislative Division. Uh later on, I think Yosek Emmanuel Caindic will uh will also join. And then we have from the Bureau of Internal Revenue, Attorney Albert Nilton Tibayan from the Law and Legislative Division, with Attorney Brianna de los Santos. From the Securities and Exchange Commission, we have Attorney Trina Donabel Gojúnco and Sir Vicente Penya-Mora. From the Philippine Competition Commission, we have Commissioner Johannes Benjamin Bernabe, Mr. Jedrick Jose Lotilia. Uh from the Department of National Defense, we have Attorney Raymond Zenon Almera from the Legal Office. From the National Security Council, we have Ms. Maria Victoria Castro, Assistant Secretary, with Attorney Chari May Balenzuela. From the Department of Health, we have Mr. Yuli M. Gallo, Assistant Division Chief uh from the Knowledge Management Information Technology Service. He will be joined by other U S representatives later. We have Mr. From the Dito Telecommunity Corporation, we have Attorney Adele Tamano, Chief Administrative Officer. From Instant Data Incorporated, we have Mr. Aspanso Cruz President with Attorney Karidad Gonzalez, Consultant. From the Trans-Pacific Broadband Group International, we have Attorney Leonides Respesio, Corporate Secretary, with Mr. Paul B. Saria, Vice President. From the Blockbuster Broadcasting System, we have Mr. Leo Nelson Capulso, President, with Ms. Lee Y. B. Catapia, Financial Consultant. From the Tag Bilangan Broadcasting System Inc., we have Mr. Anastasio Daniel Junior, President, with Mr. Jeffrey Topaz. Uh sorry, that's uh that's for Tag Bilangan. Uh Mr. Anastasio Daniel Junior. For Davao City Radio Broadcasting Station, we have Mr. Jeffrey Topaz, Davao City Information Officer, with Mr. Billy Danril Dulatre, a consultant, Davao City Radio. From Cervatron Industries Inc., we have Mr. Ramon Esqueta, Chief Operating Officer, General Manager, with Mr. Danilo Enfante, Chief Financial Officer. From the University of the Philippine System, we have Attorney Danilo Concepcion, the President of the System, with Attorney Hector Danioli, Vice President for Legal Affairs. For Allied Broadcasting Center Inc., we have Mr. Edward Benedict Vigalang, the Director and Head of Engineering. For Palawan Broadcasting Corporation, we have Mr. Victor Degosaman, Head of Finance, with Mr. uh and Mr. Elgin Damasco, the General Manager. For Saint Jude Tadeus Institute of Technology, we have Attorney Marylin Santos, Legal Counsel. For Good News Sorsogon Foundation Inc., we have Father Philip Gallianosa, the President, and Mr. Pierre S. Gueva, the General Manager. For Baycombs Broadcasting Corporation, we have Mr. Elmer Catulpos, the President, with Ms. J L C White Catulpos, the Chief Financial Officer. From Highland Broadcasting Network Corp., we have Mr. Armelo Coro, the President and Chairman, with Attorney Army Jane Rova Borja, the Legal Advisor. We have, from Democracy.net, we have Engineer Pierre Ito Galia. And from K P M G R G Manabat and Company, we have Mr. Delaine Marcel S. Manrique. Uh that's all for the meantime, Madam Chair.
Thank you. As I said, we're going to begin with our broadcasting franchises. Um, I will ask the N T C, the S E C, and the B I R. Have you evaluated the applicants for franchise? Are all the applicants able to completely and timely submit necessary documents, pay taxes, among others? Are there any issues, liabilities, or pending cases concerning the franchises? Let's begin with the N T C. N T C, you have the names of all of the broadcasting companies uh applying for a franchise?
Um, yes, your honors.
Okay. Um, and so all of them, uh let me repeat the names again, one by one. And then tell me if they've all complied. Let's begin with uh Blockbuster Broadcasting.
Um, yes, Your Honor. Uh that's House Bill six two.
They're compliant?
Yes, yes, Your Honor.
Okay. Tag Bilangan Broadcasting?
Yes, Your Honor. Okay naman po siya.
City Government of Davao?
Um, yes, Your Honor. That's I think that's a new franchise.
Okay. So no issues, right?
No issues po.
University of the Philippine System?
Um, no issues, Your Honors.
Roland Broadcasting?
Um, they're also compliant, Your Honors.
Cervatron Industries?
Um, they are likewise compliant, Your Honors.
Christian Music Power?
Uh they're also compliant, Your Honors.
Good News Sorsogon Foundation?
Um, they're also compliant, Your Honors.
Allied Broadcasting Center?
Same, Your Honors. Okay din po sila.
Palawan Broadcasting Corporation?
Yes, Your Honors. They're also compliant.
Saint Jude Tadeus Institute of Technology?
Um, they're also compliant, Your Honors.
Baycombs Broadcasting Corporation?
Um, they're also compliant, Your Honors.
And finally, Highland Broadcasting Network?
Um, I think that's a new franchise, Your Honors, so no issues as well.
Okay. Um, can you describe to us briefly, Commissioner? What are the requirements for you to be able to allow them to operate? Uh the major requirements that they have to fulfill as broadcasting companies?
Opo. Thank you very much po. Uh first of all, Your Honors, uh what we check is their technical capacity. So um it's actually based on the number of um E C Es or electronics and communication engineers that they have. And then they also have to submit uh their annual reports for us to check their seventy-thirty debt equity uh if they're compliant with that financial requirement, Your Honors. Also, uh we also check if they have um any pending administrative cases. But uh so far in dito po sa list natin, okay naman po sila lahat. And if they're also updated with their uh supervision and regulatory fees, updated din po sila lahat, Your Honors.
So Commissioner, for example, it's a new applicant. You checked their capability. You already have checked their capability? The technical capability?
Um, for for new for new uh applicant, Your Honors, uh once they get the the franchise from the uh Congress, uh assigned also by the President, um what what they do is they apply for an authority per area, Your Honors. So kunwari po, um ang ang a new one would be Highland or Davao uh broadcasting. Uh we will check po this uh three these three items, 'yung kanila pong legal, if their franchise is uh um valid and if they have a sixty, 'yung pong one hundred percent Filipino ownership because it's a broadcasting company. Another thing is we check if the proposed area, they can uh roll out based on a seventy-thirty debt equity. Kung tama po yun, and then pangatlo po, is yun pong meron po sila sinasabit ng mga rollout plans, 'yung pong technical. So based on those three items po, we grant or we deny their uh their petition po, Your Honors.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Lalaksa muna. Uh we'll call the next naman. Uh for the N P C, after the N P C, we have the Security and Exchange Commission.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
So the S E C, um were they able to pub- completely submit necessary documents, pay the fees? All of these franchises that we are tackling today for broadcast? Are they all current?
Uh, Your Honor, for the broadcasting companies, um for Blockbuster Broadcasting?
Uh can can ma'am, can you speak louder? We really can't hear you.
Um hello? Um is this clear enough?
Okay.
Uh for Blockbuster Broadcasting System A, um we have to um coordinate with our compliance monitoring division for the monitoring since uh they they are asked to amend the twenty twenty G I S to include the Chairman of the Board. So um as to other compliance, um they are um in compliance with the requirement except for the amendment of the twenty twenty G I S. That is for Blockbuster Broadcasting System A. Um for Roland Broadcasting Enterprises A, we issued a tentative monitoring sheet. So um they're asked to again um coordinate with our compliance monitoring division. And uh for Christian Music Power Inc., there is a prepared monitoring sheet with a penalty of five hundred pesos. They just have to settle this with the S E C. Then we 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 can already issue a certificate of no derogatory information after the submission of the money uh after the settlement of the penalty. Um lastly, for Cervatron Industries A, we also prepared a monitoring sheet in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred twenty-five. The company is asked to settle the penalties and after which we can issue the certificate of no derogatory information. Um, Your Honor, uh those are just the four broadcasting companies uh that uh that we ask to coordinate with our compliance monitoring division for the update of the certificate of no derogatory information.
So the other companies you have not had a chance to evaluate yet?
Well, we we had a chance to evaluate them and they're uh in compliance with all the requirements. Uh in fact, we have already prepared the corresponding certificate of no derogatory information for the other broadcasting companies.
Okay. So we would like to ask the S E C to please submit the remaining documents that need to be provided by those companies that you mentioned. Uh because before we present in plenary uh the franchise bill, those will have to be fulfilled.
Great, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. Um and then, of course, the B I R.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, yes, um for the for the for the following companies, uh there are no uh we have, we didn't see any pending issues regarding their tax compliance?
So no, no issues with all the companies mentioned for tax compliance? Okay, then that was quick. Now, uh since we got all those technical aspects out of the way, I would like to ask uh the franchise applicants now, a representative for each, um to describe in two minutes or less what your what service your company can provide. Um and for the record, that you are strictly following the sixty-forty rule on ownership, meaning sixty percent Filipino own. How many employees do you have? How much is your annual net income? How much is your operating cost? What is your coverage right now? Uh do you plan to ex- expand? Um, and if you are also aware that a certain percentage of your broadcast should be child-friendly shows, um I I you know, I I should ask also the K B P. Maybe after all of your presentations, you will ask the K B P to comment. Um so let's begin um with Blockbuster. Go ahead.
Uh good morning, Your Honor. My name is Nelson Capulso, President of Blockbuster Broadcasting Inc. Uh our station is located in Magdalugong and our uh scope of broadcast is Metro Manila. Of course, we have uh spillover in in Batangas. Our format is R and B uh and hip-hop. And of course, uh we offer service uh by news and information and of course, public service by by local news. And our ownership is one hundred percent Filipino. And right now, since uh because of the pandemic, uh we have uh applied for a follow from Dole. Uh so ngayon, at least we have how many? At least twelve employees for now. And uh uh also from the documents that we submitted before regarding our our plans in the future, we have all our plans in the future, we have already uh uh bought a new solid-state transmitter and antenna for uh better signal, of course, uh for audience. Uh that's it, uh your honor. Thank you.
I I have a quick question for Blockbuster. Um in two thousand to two thousand one, uh you were you a neophyte company. You were able to acquire an F M radio station from I B C, reported at about two hundred eighteen million for the said station. Um how is that money acquired? Uh uh who are your big um sources for that investment?
Okay, uh your honor, I'll uh I will have to ask uh our uh financial consultant uh before I can answer that.
It's okay. Um I I I assume this is above board. Just submit to us in writing the explanation for that. Because as you as you know, this uh particularly now, everybody's very concerned. I know you said it's a hundred percent uh Filipino owned and and I I believe, I I know uh this company. I just have to make sure so that they don't go back and let, you know, tell us that we didn't do our due diligence. Um there was a pending, because also there was a pending temporary restraining order by the Court of Appeals at the time. Despite this, P C G G pushed through with the bidding and your corporation uh participated. So why did the company participate in the bid despite the fact that there was a pending T R O? Um I suppose on the on the share shares of the government for this radio station, I B C. So just submit to us uh the history behind that so that there will be no questions about it later on.
Yes, your honor. Thank you very much.
Okay, next. Um the city government of Davao. Um please do your uh introduction.
Yes, good morning, your honor. I am Jeffrey Tupas. I am the City Information Officer of Davao City. Um the Davao City Disaster Radio uh has been operating since uh February last year. We partnered with uh the Armed Forces of the Philippines as their affiliate, a radio station in Davao City. Uh pending our, of course, the franchise uh application. Um uh the radio station is um funded by the uh disaster fund of the city and we are also catering. Uh we are we're not only heard in Davao City but also across the uh region. We also cater to um programs um from uh for example, Davao, uh Dioro, uh Davao Occidental and the nearby uh provinces of Davao uh city. Um basically, um we are a radio station that um um the advocacy of the radio station is to prepare communities when it comes to um disaster, uh allow them to uh allow them to, you know, be resilient and uh be ready when it comes to flood and uh this kind of disasters, your honor. So um we we are currently uh employing around uh twenty uh around twenty employees, um all of them uh paid by the City Government of Davao, your honor.
Okay. Um what's important, of course, is information, uh but also the importance of information is the validity of it and also the fairness of reporting. I know that you're with the city government or even a government corporation or even a government company should always be fair and balanced. And I and I hope uh Mister Tupas uh being one of the representatives, he will advocate for for that. Uh that everybody will have a chance uh for the freedom of expression and then also, I mean of course, to a to a limit without being um uh offensive in a way, but I would also like to know, are you are you helping the government um with distance learning? Do you have a portion of your program for distance learning for students?
Um I uh ba- there there was supposed to be a partnership with uh the uh with Dep Ed on on this, your honor. Um only that um uh something went amiss uh during the negotiation, but it's not actually a major major thing. Uh it just didn't went through. Um when it comes to um the information of of the information that you've mentioned earlier, your honor, um the the mandate, the order of the city government, of of the the city mayor of Davao is to actually just report the facts, 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 facts.
Okay. Uh so are you going to be uh one of the commentators, Mister Tupas?
Uh every now and then I get to um, you know, see it in one of the uh of of the uh programs, but it's not always, your honor.
Okay. But you have you have uh main hosts, regular main hosts?
Yeah, yes, your yes, your honor.
All right. Well, thank you for your presence here today. And I don't see any well, we will we will ask, are you a member of the K B P?
Uh not yet, your honor. Um the city government, the radio station is not yet a member of the K B P.
All right. Then that's something you can probably work on. It's nice also to be a part of the uh kapisahanan ng mga broadcasters. All right. Thank you very much.
Good day po.
Okay, next. Um the University of the Philippine System. Do we have the representative? Nandito ba, U P? Uh Mister, I I I saw you. Uh Miss Mister Uy? Sir, you're still muted.
Good morning, uh good morning, uh.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, uh my co-members uh in government. Um the University of the Philippines is on is asking for the renewal. It had been granted um in nineteen ninety five, a franchise that has expired and that we are operating on temporary permits from the N P C, I think. That's how I was made of this time. Um in so far as the budget of the U P of the T V U P is concerned, it's derived on the budget of the university itself by way of government appropriation.
Uh sir, can you speak louder, please? I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you can you speak louder or closer near my?
Yeah, the budget of the T V station is derived from the budget of the University of the Philippines. And so uh dependent also on the ba- on uh on congressional appropriation. Um the T V U P or the broadcast of U P operates largely as an extension project of the purpose of the university under the charter of the U P. It is supposed to operate as an academic institution. But it has um grant been granted extension work and the T V franchise had always been operating as an extension apart largely as an extension of a extension project of the university.
Sir, let me cut you off now. Um how many employees do you have?
Um I think there should be no more than less than twenty, I think. Yeah, Madam Chair.
Uh give me a sample of your program. I I always stress um fairness and and I hope that you give uh all sides a chance to be able to present their views, right?
Um some of the programs I am aware of involve uh like going from the more recent ones backwards. As I recall, when COVID nineteen pandemic set in and and the lockdown was enforced or enforced or this was enforced, the programs focused on public information about the uh uh government issuances and also the advice coming from the experts of the university from P G H. Information dissemination of ordinary safe practices as well as update to the public of uh the pandemic, the as well as the vaccines. But there were more to it. Um just we submitted that to to the commission, but right now I'm in search of it right now. Uh
Okay. Sir, thank you. I I am in support of this. Uh I think that the university, especially the University of the Philippines, should have its uh own broadcast uh capability. So there are no issues. I I don't think I can recommend this uh for plenary. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next is Servatron Industries Incorporated. A brief intro- introduction, please. Who's the representative? Are you present? Please unmute yourself. Wala. Okay, let's go to the next. Christian Music Power Incorporated.
Good morning, your honor.
Okay.
I'm Attorney Mary Marlene Santos.
I'm sorry, um attorney, can can we go back to you? We have Servatron. I I see them now, Mister Esqueta.
Yes, your honor. Good morning, Madam Chair and other members of the committee. Uh my name is Ramona Esqueta. I am the C E O of Servatron. Servatron is a domestic and Filipino-owned company and we are now seeking for the renewal of our legislative franchise before this honorable committee. We are uh we employ uh three people and we have applied for frequency with uh N T C for several years now, since two thousand seven on uh the digital platform. And uh we currently have uh existing agreements with the Dep Ed to provide resources and assist them in their uh blended alternate alternative educational system. Uh we look forward to the renewal of the franchise and we're willing to uh provide any document as well as additional in- information that uh Madam Chair and the other members of the committee would like us to provide. Thank you very much.
Where is your area of broadcast, sir? Servatron? This is nationwide?
Yes, uh initially our, yes, initially our franchise was N C R only, but this time we would like to uh amend our franchise to make it nationwide so we can as we have said, assist the Dep Ed in their blended alternative educational system in the other areas of the country, particularly the underserved areas.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um let's go let's go now to Christian Music Power Incorporated.
Good morning, your honor.
Yes, good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, all members of uh present. Um your honor, Christian Music operates um under the business name Ed's Radio. It has uh currently four F M stations situated in Kidapawan City, uh San Buanga Sibugay, um Gihulingan, and um uh another one in Kidapawan. Um the station exists primarily to share God's message of hope and love through his son, Jesus Christ. It aims to inspire its listeners, in particular the youth and young professionals to lead a life of faith, positivity, and action. Its programming format is designed to propagate the Christian worldview through music ministry and social awareness. Contribute to values formation and uh the development of strong family ties, life skills, and good partnership. It has an authorized capital of eight million, a paid up of two million. Um I do not have at this time the number of employees, your honor, but um the station continues its operation in and also offers news to information, social, and educational issues. Programs, your honor.
Thank you. Um I I understand that you partner up with the Department of Education for distance learning?
Uh yes, I I would think so, your honor.
Uh you you don't know?
I'm not so sure about um the mindano aspect of the operations relative to distance learning, your honor. But uh we can provide the information, um.
Yeah, please do because it's it's also an important aspect of the consideration for your franchise. We have received uh report that you are actually providing distance learning to students in Pagsanhan. So that is a very valuable consideration. Yes, please submit to the committee. Um I would like to acknowledge, actually, in this hearing, the presence of the President of the University of the Philippines. Uh Attorney Danny Concepcion, but I I I can't see him in my monitor. Um well, Attorney Danny, wala wala na namang problema dun sa franchise sa U P. Uh not because uh I was once I I was once in the U P system, uh but because that we have many supporters also in the Senate that believe in the broadcast uh importance given to the University of the Philippines. Okay, so next, let's go to Roland Broadcasting. Roland, are you present? Are you present, Roland? I we can't hear you. Okay, on to the next. Um Good News Sorsogon Foundation.
Present, Madam Chair.
Uh please identify your yourself, your name again, please.
Opo. I am Father Philip Andrew Valmasgalianosa, Chair and C E O of Good News Sorsogon Foundation Incorporated.
Napakaganda na ng Sorsogon ngayon. Ang galing ng governor niyo, no?
Indeed, madam. Uh sana nakaka-participate at operate kaming lahat.
Very good. Okay, um please uh introduce yourselves.
Opo. Uh Madam Chair, Senator Grace Po, honorable members of the Senate Committee on Public Services, all present. A blessed Wednesday morning po.
As I said before, I am Father Philip, Chair and C E O of Good News Sorsogon Foundation Incorporated. These last six years, I have experienced firsthand how good news G N through radio and television, social media have been a great religious educational, cultural, social, community, and public service and disaster-prepaid reservice to the city and the province of Sorsogon. It has not been an easy challenge as we have always been beset by many difficulties. But with the help of the good people of Sorsogon and our benefactors from other places, we continue our mission to spread the good news. We have many typhoons, your honor, seasang to Ulysses, and G N S F I, who is Spirit Akram Sorsogon, has constantly and without fail been of service to the local disaster risk management office of the local government unit together with the K B P radio stations. And we have continually served Sorsogon through balanced information, news, inspiring programs, promoting religion, education, health and livelihood, and wholesome entertainment. Your honors, in these times of pandemic, since March twenty twenty, we have worked overtime in ensuring that holy masses and religious services are heard and shown at home and making health advisories and tips widely disseminated, helping our local Department of Health and through programs such as Doctors on Air in making available programs to alleviate fear and anxiety through religious programs and mental health-related segments, especially through Hello Father and other programs for evangelization. In aiding our local education, Department of Education uh Senator and uh members of the Senate of uh Committee Hearing, we are offering uh the radio for the past, we have been offering the radio for the past months already, for the R B I, Radio Based Destruction, the Dep at Sorsogon Province, and also the Dep at Sorsogon City. And in this way, we uh we hope to continue to uh uh teach and help our young to uh education must continue these times of pandemic through eres squela and rages squela of the uh G N S F I. We have been learning through these past years.
Thank you, Father Philip. Uh I think we've we've heard enough of the service-oriented network or broadcast network that you are born to. network or broadcast network that you are going to provide. So we appreciate that. We we have to go on to the next now. Thank you again, sir. Um Allied Broadcasting Center Incorporated. Just a very brief introduction.
Uh good morning, your honors. Morning, ma'am. Uh I'm Emmanuel Gallan, President of the Allied Broadcasting Corporation, and we are operating several radio stations in the provinces.
Okay, I I know that from your track record, I I actually visited one of your radio stations and I know that you provide vital information. Are um, Mr. Gallan, do you do you have any partnerships with DEP Ed? I'm just curious for distance learning.
Uh uh not, no, no, ma'am.
But would would the company have the capability? Do you still have airtime to provide that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's all, Mr. Gallan. Thank you very much. Okay, next we have uh Saint Jude de Deus Institute of Technology.
Uh good morning, your honors. Um Saint Jude de Deus Institute of Technology is uh the only institution in the Karaga region. It offers degree programs and technical vocational courses in broadcasting and engineering with state-of-the-art television and radio broadcasting facilities and equipment. Um it operates uh F M and T V station in Surigao City and uh operates in Mawab, Davao di Oro, Jen San, and Rosario Agusan. Um it offers for its programming wholesome entertainment and timely news and public affairs information to its listeners. Um it has an authorized capital of uh fifteen million and a paid up of um six million seven hundred eighty-six. That's all, your honor.
That's a very concise um and well, a very concise and complete presentation. Thank you so much. At Saint Jude de Deus Institute of Technology.
Thank you, your honors.
Next, uh Highland Broadcasting Network Corporation.
Uh good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Carmelo Coro. I represent, I'm the president. I represent Highland Broadcasting Network. Um I would like to take this opportunity to thank the committee for giving us opportunity to apply for our franchise. If given the franchise, we will be operating uh um in the northern part of Mindanao, uh primarily in Bukidnon and probably Cagayan de Oro. Um we've noticed uh during the pandemic that especially when the government have their daily briefings that um none of the stations or probably just one or two of them um hooked up and uh um the people of Bukidnon and northern Mindanao were not able to hear um the current status of the country and the pandemic. Also, it's very important for us being an agricultural country um um to give updates to the farmers when typhoon comes uh um and other programs the government basically um uh for free seedlings and fertilizer. Um if franchise, we uh initially be operating in Bukidnon or in Cagayan de Oro and we will be initially be having around nine to twelve employees, Madam Chair.
Um would you have the technical capability to broadcast in those uh far-flung areas? I I I'm I'm glad to hear that that's your main goal is to provide information and especially in those areas that the signal is pretty weak. Would you have that capability, Mr. Carmelo?
Yes, ma'am. Um we can, we currently have a technical study, madam, that tells us basically um how high the antenna should be and what is the wattage that we need to put for the first station, basically. So uh based on the outcome of that study, of our technical study, we will be um complying and basically that's the first step up that we will be doing.
Do you know how much your capital should be to be able to make this possible?
Initially, Madam Chair, we're looking, the the we were told that initially it will be costing around for the first station around ten to fifteen million pesos, Madam Chair, thereabouts.
Ten to fifteen or ten to fifty?
Fifteen, madam, fifteen.
Fifteen. Um and Ward, are are you the chairman of the company?
Yeah, I'm the president, the chairman, madam.
How many employees do you plan to hire?
Initially, it will be around nine to twelve, madam, but they're they're prob, they're probably be purely technical uh since we'll just be setting up and probably um we want to basically hire from the local universities, basically for the engineers. So eh fresh graduates or recently graduate um engineers from from the local universities.
That's a very progressive idea. I'm glad you thought of that. Um hiring from the local community, from your own graduates to provide them jobs, that's exactly the goal of having a franchise. And congratulations to your province because I know there's like so much potential and promise lately uh with your very uh capable uh leaders.
Thank you, madam. Thank you so much.
All right, um.
Just one question, Madam Chair.
Oh, wait, okay. So I would like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Joel Villanueva.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that the uh Bukidnon is one of the most exciting provinces right now in the country and the information is very important. I just wanted to know from uh the 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 chair and C E O if uh this is being uh uh pushed also by our L G S, especially if our colleague from the Senate, Senator Zubiri, is uh 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 okay with this, Mister Madam Chair?
Uh I believe Senator Zubiri is present, uh Madam Chair, so um.
Madam Chair, yes, Madam Chair.
Uh I'd like to acknowledge again uh our majority leader.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I'm just shuttling between the Bangsa Moro extension and the franchise uh committee. But yes, I'm also a principal sponsor of this as I filed the version in the Senate. Uh you know, our problem, Madam Chair, in Bukidnon is we're so isolated geographically because of the mountainous uh nature of our uh province. And so uh we're, we are so happy that we have investors that are coming in, that will be able to help us uh with spreading the good news, spreading uh more information to uh the public there. So yes, uh uh Madam Chair, we're in full support of this measure. And we thank uh the committee for taking this up. Thank you.
Then, Madam Chair, we are also in full support because I asked that question because we are all aware that uh previously Bukidnon is one of the top ten poorest provinces in the country and now it's 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 gone in that category. It's uh moving by leaps and bounds, uh Madam Chair.
Yeah, just to add to that, Madam Chair, we're the fifth richest province now in terms of assets and uh and of course income. So we're very proud of that. We'd like to spread that out to the whole region. Thank you, Senator Joel. Thank you.
Yes. It's important that there's proper representation for the provinces. Look at uh Senator Zubiri's Bukidnon and of course we have Senator Delon Stiloino. Both both very progressive. Um I I I think that many probably don't know, but the majority leader's a farmer. So maybe you'll have uh, Mr. Carmelo, you'll have programs that will benefit our uh farmers in Bukidnon, especially now there some challenges being faced by many of them all over the country. So I guess that's it. I I I'm sure this will be recommended for plenary. Thank you very much, Highland. Uh next, we have Tag Bilaran. Tag Bilaran?
Madam Chair?
Ah yes.
Uh post a a parliamentary inquiry. May we know if uh the uh U P uh franchise has already been tackled? I'm sorry because I'm I'm going from commission and appointments to committee hearings and and stuff. I just wanted to know, Madam Chair.
Yes, it's been tackled, but if you would like to do uh manifest anything, um we would welcome that, Senator Joel.
Thank you very much, Miss Madam Chair. I'm I'm no longer going to give uh uh my sponsorship speech, but may I just be allowed to move that it be inserted into the records, Mr. Madam Chair? As uh I I wanted to make sure that uh I am part of this uh deliberation and uh uh to to signify my uh full support to this uh measure, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you, uh Senator Joel. Your your uh manifestation will be included in our records.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh Mr. Daniel, President of Tag Bilaran.
Ba, uh good morning, uh Madam Chair. Uh Ote Anastasio Daniel Junior po, Presidenti po ng Tag Bilaran Broadcasting System incorporated. We are a hundred percent Filipino corporations. We provide three hours programming in distance learning. I signed up with uh earlier this, last year, a DEP Ed agreement to uh uh air program on distance learning. We also provide programming on our farmers, organic farming, and we operate three stations in the Visayas regions and we want to extend our coverage nationwide uh promoting spohano programming.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad to hear that you are helping the Department of Education also with distance learning. Um
Yes, ma'am.
We, yes, we will also recommend uh the approval of your franchise plenary. Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you po.
Okay, um Palawan Broadcasting. Mr. Damasco, sir, go ahead, please.
Yes, good morning, Madam Presiding. Uh your honors, uh specially sa aking kababayan, Senator Mig Subiri na Bukidnon. Madam Presiding, uh Palawan Broadcasting Corporation is the first broadcasting company in our province, Palawan. Bahagi na po ito ng aming kasaysayan at buhay ng bawat palawenyo na hinubog ng nag-iisa lamang noon na empilakan ang D Y P R. Eh ninanais po ng mamamayan ng lalawigan ng Palawan, Madam Presiding. Na mananatiling buhay ang D Y P R sa pamamagitan ho ng pagrenew ng prangkisan ito ah kung inyo pong mamarapatin. Kaya kami po ay nakikiusap na sana pagbigyan po ninyo na manatiling buhay ang D Y P R para patuloy itong makapaglingkod sa aming lalawigan, maging sa ibang lalawigan na meron po kaming utolidad na magbroadcast. Akakasa po kayo, Madam Presiding officer, mga uh your honors. Na mananatili kaming uh katuwang ng ating pamahalaan ah na maging daluyan ng mga mahalaga impormasyon ah sa ating bayan at pamamayan, lalong-lalo na po sa mga advocacy akuninyo. Uh Senator Grace uh Po, uh Madam Presiding. Tatalawin po namin ng isa malaking utang na loob na muli pong mapagbigyan at sisiguruhin po na magiging bahagi po kayo ng kasaysayan bilang mga opisyal na muling bubuhay sa pinakaunang broadcasting station ng lalawigan ng Palawan. Ang D Y P R sa pamamagitan ng prangkisa po dito na Palawan Broadcasting Corporation. Maraming salamat po, Madam Presiding.
Ah maraming salamat din, Councilor Damasco. Ang ganda ng presentation po ninyo. Naigli lamang pero damang-dama. Um alam mo 'yung Palawan, malaking hamon talaga dahil uh alam mo naman 'yung mga isla dyan, di ba? At ang dami sa ating mga kababayan na napibighani sa ganda ng Palawan at pumupunta dyan. Napakahalaga ng impormasyon, lalong-lalo na para sa ating mga manginisga para malaman kung anong panahon, anong anong uh lagay ng laot, di ba? Lahat ng mga bagay na 'yan at uh importante na makarating sa kanila ang mga balita kagad-agad. So maraming salamat ulit, Councilor, sa iyong presentation. Irecommenda po namin ito sa plenario. Thank you, sir.
Maraming salamat po, madam. Thank you po.
Thank you. Uh now we have BaComms Broadcasting. Uh Mr. Katulpos.
Um good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair. Uh Honorable Grace Po, good morning, your honors. I am Elmer V. Katulpos. I am the President and Chief Executive Officer of BaComms Broadcasting Corporation. Our company, BaComms, is a grantee of legislative franchise to operate radio and television stations in the Philippines for so on to Republic Act eight seven one eight that was enacted on July sixteen nineteen ninety-eight. BaComms is one hundred percent Filipino-owned with one hundred sixty-seven employees. As of today, your honors, BaComms is carrying out its broadcast through its twenty-seven F M radio stations nationwide with news, public affairs, and music format in our content. We are providing one hour free airtime for DEP Ed in all our radio stations for DEP Ed Blended Alternative Learning System. We have twenty-six F M stations located in the Visayas and Mindanao regions and one F M radio station in Batangas. We also have one T V broadcast station that is operating in General Santo City. Although the focus of our broadcasts have been in the countryside, we humbly believe that we have been able to fulfill the mandate of public service that is at the heart of our legislative franchise. That is why we respectfully ask your honors that we be granted a renewal of our legislative franchise so that we can continue to provide quality, dependable, and trustworthy broadcast to our audiences, especially in the provinces. On behalf of BaComms Broadcasting Corporation, I would like to thank this committee for including our application in the agenda of today's hearing. Thank you, your honors. That would be all. Thank you, your honors.
Thank you, Mr. Katulpos. Uh I'm I'm glad to hear that you're actually broadcasting in many different uh provinces, almost nationally, no? Okay, um lastly, we have Roland and Miss General Manager Paglumotan.
Magagandang bagat po, your honor. At sa lahat ng miyembro ng committee, nagpapasalamat po ako dahil uh bilang kinatawan ng Roland Broadcasting Incorporated, and we are only limited to the province of Palawan. Ang uh binigay na franchise way back in nineteen ninety-six, our Roland Broadcasting Enterprises Incorporated is only limited within the purview of Palawan. At kami po ay nag-ooperate na lahat ay Filipino. Ang uh corporasyon na ito. We have three radio stations. Uh ang main broadcast center is in Puerto Prinsesa. Ang isa ay nasa bayan ng Narapalawan sa Sur at uh sa Rojas, uh bayan ng Rojas, sa Palawan del Norte. At kami po ay nag-ooperate sa pinakamataas at isa sa pinakka-alternatibong mamamahiag, sa angalan ng malayang pamamahiag sa radyo. Dahil sa sobrang lawak po ng lalawigan ng Palawan, your honor, kagaya ng sinabi kanina ni Councilor Elgin Robert Damasco, nagtutulungan po kami para mapaglingkuran ng buong husay at buong tapat ang napakalawak na lalawigan ng Palawan. At nagpapasalamat po ako bilang General Manager ng Roland Broadcasting na naisama kami ngayong umaga, and we are hoping to secure our renewal uh of our franchise. At kami po ay in full support sa mga magagandang advocacy po ng pamahalaan ng Republika ng Pilipinas. Tatalima kami sa batas at higit sa lahat, paglilingkuran namin ang sambayan ng palawenyo. That would be all. Marami salamat, your honor.
Alam mo, ang gagaling talaga ng mga tigapalawan ngayon, ha? Meron pa mga pagtutulungan sa mga ibang radio stations. That's that's very nice to hear. And of course, mentioning that uh you will be compliant with the laws of the country and that you will provide the service. Thank you so much, Mr. Paglumotan.
Marami salamat, your honor.
Okay, we will also recommend to plenary the approval of your franchise. Um I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Nancy P. Nae. Um so before we go to the K B P, if they are, for them to be able to give a short uh statement with regards to the applicants for broadcast. Uh I would like to acknowledge uh Senator Bongo, who would like to deliver his manifestation. Is Senator Bongo present now? Baka nasa C A pa. Okay, um let's, can can we ask the representative? I think it's Mr. Herman Basbanyo of K B P. Uh sir, do you have, uh are you familiar with those that are applying now for your franchises? If you have anything to add to our discussion with regards to the reputation of those companies that you're familiar with?
Yes, magandang umaga po, Madam Chair. Uh your honors, uh good morning po. Uh we interpose no objection, Madam Chair, to all the applications. Uh sa matak of that, we fully support all the applications, including the non-members, uh Madam Chair, with the prayer lang na the they become members now of the K B P in due time so that we can share with them our system, our guidelines, and our broadcast code of ethics, Madam Chair. So supportive naman namin ang lahat na mga applications, Madam Chair.
See, maganda talaga 'yung samahan ng K B P. They're supportive of the broadcast industries, but also promoting um the proper ethical standards. And that's important for the broadcast industries. Alam mo, meron na tayong good manners and right conduct na batas na pinasa para sa ating mga paaralan. Siguro, in Siguro importante ipaalala rin natin 'yan. 'Yung pwede naman tayong maging kritikal, uh, pero siguro 'yung tamang pakikitungo at respeto sa isa't isa ay mapahalagahan natin. At isa 'yan sa isinusulong ng KBP, and meron silang self-regulation. So, malakas na samahan 'yan sa SOS. So, mga hindi pangkasali, sumali na kayo. 'Yung Highland, sumali kayo. Highland Broadcasting. Para ano, um, tapos siguro 'yung Dabao rin. Uh, very charming din 'yung mga representatives ng mga bagong uh, radio applicants dito eh. So, yun lamang po, um, tutungo na tayo sa pangalawang,
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Uh, pero wala pa yata si Senator Bongo, ma-manifest ba? Ah, nasa CA pa rin siya. Okay, so kung wala ng katanungan para sa ating mga broadcast franchise applicants, uh, right now, I would just like to say that I am uh, inclined to recommend all of the applicants now for submission to plenary. Madam Chair. Hold on, just one second. One second, please. Sorry, may tinuntahan lang akong isa panggiring. Balik ka ka. Um, alright.
Madam Chair.
Yes, we, yes, uh, Senator Nancy.
Hindi. Be- before we approve lang, gusto ko lang sana itanong, um, kasi alam naman nga natin, di ba? We have this blended learning, and I think isa dun sa bahagi ng blended learning, 'yung uh, participation ng mga broadcast, broadcasting natin. Dun, ba sa mga applicants po ngayon, meron ba silang collaboration with DEEP-Em?
Um, Senator Nancy, uh, they all said that they are, either they have already an existing partnership or they are willing to provide airtime for that partnership.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, we will recommend to plenary the approval of your franchises. Of course, for the ones that were cited by the SEC, uh, please fulfill the requirements that are needed so that we can already fast-track the approval. And also, uh, there are some questions that I ask, uh, an applicant, uh, just submit to our office. So, we have it uh, for the record, because as you know, whenever we publish, uh, the names of the applicants for franchises, our constituents send us questions to ask also. So, we, we have to be able to articulate those questions. So, again, thank you to our guests from the broadcast industry. You're free to watch our hearing for the telecommunications, um, franchise, uh, but if not, enjoy your lunch.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you po, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations, Madam Chair, to all the applicants and to Herman Basbano, my good friend. Sir, mayong aga.
Mayong aga, thank you.
Mayong aga, sir. Congratulations to all from Palawan to Dabao to, to some Visayas and Mindanao. Congratulations.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator.
And Yael, and of course, Kay Yael, good morning, Yael, Cordoba.
Oh, 'yung mga radio commentators at the post namin dyan, ah, lahat ng mga tatakbo, uh, pahirapaninyo 'yung mga tanong ah, sa mga issues.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Chairman, Chairman, Chairperson. Request lang namin, Chairperson, discount rate lang. Wag masadong mahal. Kawawa naman kami. Masado, masado kawawa ang politiko pag eleksyon. Sana discounted rate naman.
Madam Chair.
Mister Senator.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, ay ano, I object dun sa proposal ng ating majority. Dugi tayong dalawa kung makakadisccount si Senator ano, Miggs.
Oo nga.
Lahat na.
Malay mo, malay mo, baka maging running mate ni Senator Grace, uh, si Senator Bongo at Senator Grace, baka magkasama sila.
Ay, naku, tigilan mo yahan para.
Nandyan si Senator Bong, nakikinig.
Senator Bong, ako baka.
Maraming presidensya po na 'yan dito.
Meron ang running mate si Senator Bong.
Wala, wala. Uh, huwag mo ako isali dyan. Huwag mo ako isali.
Ah, Senator Bong, may manifestation kayo bago po.
Uh, Madam Chair, full support po ako sa lahat ng mga applicants na ngayon po, uh, at salamat sa, sa iyong suporta sa lahat ng mga applicants.
Uh, Senator Bong, bibigyan ka daw nila ng discount pagka nagpa-interview ka na para sa ano mo.
Sa twenty twenty-five po, twenty twenty-five.
Ah, sus, oh, sige. Um, let's go now to our next, um, uh, group of applicants for the telecommunications industry. Uh, maybe before we, we go to dito telecommunications, let's go to Instant Data. Uh, do we have the representative now of Instant Data present?
Um, Madam Chair, I am Alfonso Cruz, President and Chair of Instant Data. And uh, before we go, I'd just like to extend our deepest gratitude for letting us present uh, second time despite that unfortunate, um, accidental unableness of me to uh, appear last time. Um,
Okay. Uh, Mister Alfonso, I'm trying to find you in my screen. Um, hold on one second. I'd like to be able to actually see. Okay, go ahead, Mister Alfonso.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, um, I said Instant Data, we are a group of entrepreneurs um, with the dream of making, you know, making the Philippines a better place ge- generally, and to our eyes at least, we have found that, I think, a recent global, um, situation has even made this even clearer that the internet is such an important aspect of our life that it's akin to electricity or water these days. And it's such an unfortunate disadvantage for all these people to be able to have, um, non-access to, uh, these services. So, um, for your convenience, we have prepared a quick presentation, um, to, um, express our case for the issuance of a franchise. Gino, could you?
Okay, um, I will, of course, I will give you time. How long is this presentation?
Um, it's, we could, um, it should not take more than five minutes. I could, uh, expedite it just to, um, suit the timeframe.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, Gino, next slide, please. So, first of all, um, who are we? We are Instant Data. And our primary mission, as I mentioned earlier, is to provide a fast-accessible and uh, swift internet to those who are underserved and unserved. Um, for your consideration, we have put forth, uh, specific metrics here. Um, our Philippine population, we have one hundred one million Filipinos, uh, of which forty-seven, only forty-seven million, that's forty-six percent, have access to internet. However, out of that forty-seven million, oh, forty-one million of that entire forty-seven are from mobile users. Um, and fixed, with fixed broadband connections down all the way at just ten percent of all homes. So, as we know, um, while mobile is very accessible and it has a broader reach, fixed broadband is superior in the sense that, you know, it's cheaper, it's more acc- it's more, um, reliable, and, um, it's, it comes only. Uh, you can't argue with that. Next, please. Um, we would like to, we see this internet not just as a ben- a privilege anymore, it's more of a need, and especially during our global pandemic. We have seen this for us, as you see, I'm a great advocate of, um, distance learning, um, for the continuation of businesses during our pandemic and, and all this stuff that has become very apparent. There's still a massive demand, um, that won't be serviced anytime soon by existing players such as, you know, the, the big three. Um, we are small in scale, however, we see this as a, um, rather, as an advantage instead of a disadvantage because we can cater or more specifically tailor our services to the niche markets of the underserved and unserved. Next, please. Um, we, our initial, uh, areas of operation will include Metro Manila, Metro Cebu, and Metro Davao. Uh, medium, in the medium term, we'll, uh, expand to the underserved and unserved in areas away from these metro areas. Um, including landing stations and levit, we will plan to also, of course, as a smaller company, be agile in adopting emerging technologies to, um, adjust to the growing needs of our markets. Next, Gino. Um, our focus, as I mentioned earlier, would be small and medium businesses and underserved residential areas. Our projections, um, now, these are very, um, conservative projections um, based on just a point, a half of a percent of all residential and all rest, all business establishments in the Philippines with a growth of around twenty-five percent, uh, every year. And here is provided is a ten-year, uh, outline of that. Next, please, Gino. Uh, our projection costs, uh, we project that we will be requiring six hundred fifty million over ten years, uh, which will be, uh, raised by primarily through our investors. We will be taking up some loans, well, and taking up, uh, service, service, um, service credit to initiate our expansion into this, uh, industry. Thank you. Um, our following products. Now, notably, these products are, um, quite limited right now. We understand that. But again, as a small company, we, we boast our agility to be able to expand our products in, as required by our market. Um, for example, I, I understand that, uh, right now, these are only post-paid plans, but in the future, we plan to include prepaid plans, smaller plans, in-between plans, and very customized plans to meet, meet the needs of our market as they arise. Um, that is it for now, Your Honors.
You know, um, thank you for your presentation, Mister Alfonso. There are just a few things. Everybody who applies for a telco franchise will always say that we plan to cater underserved and unserved areas. But then, the initial rollout is always the same thing, Metro Manila, Metro Cebu, Metro Davao. So, it seems to me that the real intention maybe is, is of course, uh, to grow the business, but sometimes there are some that although they promise to do, uh, the served and underserved areas or unserved areas, they tend to have an amnesia later on when they're already, uh, given the franchise. What is our guarantee, number one, that you are actually planning to roll out in those areas? But before you answer that, there are some very basic question, questions. What is your capitalization, number one? Number two, what is your experience in having a telco company? Number three, are there still frequencies available for your company? So, let's begin with capitalization. How much are you investing and where your investors? And how did you come across this investment?
Okay, currently, ma'am, we are at, uh, five million capitalization, uh, which covers our pre, pre-operational costs. Uh, we plan to be able to raise around seventy percent, seventy-five percent of that six hundred fifty million within the first three years. Again, through, um, more investors, uh, uh, through loans and, um, service credits.
Six hundred sixty million. Now, um, what is your experience, Mister Alfonso, uh, Mister Cruz?
Okay, well, personally, ma'am, I am not, um, I have not worked directly in the telecommunications or internet field. It's, um, it, that it has become incumbent upon us to hire the best, uh, the best consultants that we have out there. We are entrepreneurs, ma'am, not necessarily telco es- experts. But we understand that, but as, as such, we have hired, um, uh, the foremost experts, I would say, such as, um, Engineer Cruz and Attorney Gonzalez.
Okay, uh, who is the majority shareholder of your company?
Um, right now, Attorney, may I, Attorney, do you have a?
Um, actually, you equally own twenty percent.
My knowledge, uh, ho, it's, we have an equal stake right now among the, among the board members.
Can you, can you read to me the names of the board members, please?
So, um, Ryan Res- Resurection, um, Alfonso Cruz, that, that's myself, Stephen Thomas Joseph, John Michael Jimenez, and Agnes Dorado.
Okay, so, Mister Cruz, um, what was your background prior? I mean, you're an entrepreneur. What companies have you held?
Um, currently, I'm, uh, Chief Operations Officer of, uh, AVECHairs Asia Inc. And, um, I'm also CEO and President of Avalcom, uh, Avalcom Asia Online.
And what, what, what kind of businesses are those?
Um, AVECH is a real estate, um, is a real estate company. We, we invest in real estate and then we, we either, uh, develop it or sell it. And, uh, Avalcom Online, but right now, we are in, it's a company is, uh, primary directive is to, uh, gather funds and invest in tech startups.
This is my concern. There are some who obtain a franchise from us and then turn around and sell it to somebody else later on. That's why we're being careful that the ones who will be granted franchise are directly responsible for the operations of the company and are actually knowledgeable of the type of, uh, telco services they're supposed to provide. So, let me ask NPC, have you actually um, investigated this, uh, company? Have you heard of them? Do they actually, do they actually have a frequency?
Um, actu- yes. Actually, Your Honors, uh, after po, uh, the company gets a franchise from the, uh, from Congress, then, um, they would apply for us for, uh, provisional authority po, kung ano po ang, sorry, kung ano po ang kanilang, uh, uh, service na gagawin, whether it's broadband internet or cellular mobile or kung ano pong service, then based on that po, we would check, uh, everything. And then, um, yun namang pong frequencies, tuloy-tuloy po ang, uh, pag, uh, bigay po ng clearance ng International Telecom Union for new frequencies, um, especially in the area of five G po, Your Honors.
Meron pa bang, meron pa bang available, sir?
Actually, what, what happens, ma'am, is the, the International Telecom Union would provide that, um, all the, all the manufacturers of equipment should prepare for these frequencies. Kapag ka po sinabi na ganun, then, 'yung po mga nasa existing frequency na yun ay, um, ililipat po namin sa ibang lugar and then i-reallocate atin siya for that particular purpose, Your Honors. So, meron po mga parating po, meron pong parating. So, there would be, um, frequencies for new players, Your Honors.
Okay, um, of course, we welcome more players to come in, but we just have to make sure that you're actually capable of running a telecommunications companies. Any of the senators would like to speak out, um? If, Majority Leader? No, no questions. Uh, how about, uh, Engineer Gallo? What's your take on this? I'm just curious. I know you're here for the other telco company, but, uh, what do you think about the application of, uh, Instant Data?
Madam Chair, thank you for, uh, allowing us to participate. Uh, but if I may, uh, participate also, ma'am, if it's, uh, related to uh, franchises of other telecommunications and broadcast, democracy.net.ph of course has an interest because this is part of the ICT ecosystem. Uh, based on their initial presentation, uh, Madam Chair, it appears that they don't need frequencies because they intend to, uh, roll out fiber. But, uh, typically, the franchise laws that we've seen provide for wired and wireless both. So that in the future, maybe if they intend to pivot towards additional services, they can. That's why the franchise laws are written in such a way to allow uh, general types of op- of telecommunications operations during its, uh, twenty-five-year lifetime. And, uh, I don't know if it's relevant. I was planning to, uh, present this in uh, late, in the later presentation if the chair asked, but would you like to see us, uh, would you like to see a summary uh, prepared by the Better Broadband Alliance on what is served and underserved in the Philippines?
I think that would be very timely. Uh, but, but before you do the presentation, because this is my plan, um, actually, we, we were going to ask you to present. Uh, but let me, let me first conclude this one, um, and then we can go to the next. And then, but concluding, uh, the interpolations for Instant Data does not mean that they're already excused from the hearing. Because we can go back after your presentation and the presentation of, um, um, the others and, and follow-up questions and, and give follow- the others and follow-up questions and give follow-up questions if we have any to them. But with instant data, am I correct, Engineer Gallo, that they don't need the frequencies because of their broadband concentration?
No, Madam Chair, they don't, they may not need frequencies because it appears that they are going to lay out fiber. So, they're not going to be transmitting. What I was saying, Madam Chair, with regard to the presentation, actually, this is an appendix of the presentation, it's just one slide if you want to take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah, please, go ahead now. Go ahead, Engineer Gallo, with your appendix of your presentation.
If you can see my screen ma'am, that is the current, this is an image courtesy of the Better Broadband Alliance, of which democracy.net.ph is a member. This is where we are as of twenty seventeen, according to the National Broadband Plan. And there's supporting information from the SWS with regard to December twenty nineteen data. So, total internet use in the Philippines with regard to broadband is still at forty-five percent. NCR is sixty-five percent, so the presentation of instant data is somewhat correct. There are still areas, particularly the rural poor, as the urban poor, where they may not have adequate broadband infrastructure. Luzon, Visayas, and Mindanao, without, with just taking one look at it, they are severely unserved and underserved. That's, this is what's relevant to the presentation of instant data, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Engineer Gallo.
Yes, ma'am. Do you wish me to pull it down now?
Will the committee secretary please pull down the slide? Thank you, sir. Okay, we will hold off first on the final recommendation for instant data. We will go now to our next telecom applicant. Do we have the representative of Trans-Pacific? Okay, please unmute yourselves. Okay.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Yes, good morning, your honors, it's a privilege to give us the opportunity to present our application on the renewal of our franchise under Republic Act eight-six-five-seven and House Bill eight-five-five-one. If permitted, may I do a presentation on our, a five-minute presentation on our, what we are, what we have accomplished and what we are planning to roll out, our roadmap for the next twenty-five years?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Trans-Pacific Broadband was incorporated in nineteen ninety-five, we have a twenty-five-year congressional franchise given on June nineteen ninety-eight. We have the authorities from NTC to transmit signal to satellites and VSAT International Internet Exchange node. We have operations in the Clark Special Economic Zone to maintain, build, and operate a satellite station. The mission is to contribute to national development, especially into underserved and unserved areas and for education and to wireless connection to government agencies and municipalities. This is our simple business model. From our satellite hub, we distribute the signal, the internet over satellite signal to schools, hospitals, government agencies, multilateral institutions, and other distribution. So, this is our financial statement, we have been operating our stockholders' equity at five hundred million, our authorized capital stock at three hundred eighty million. We have a C-band transponder, we're connected to a C-band transponder frequency and a KUKA band VSAT high-throughput satellite communication through our nine-point-three-meter satellite antenna. And our Seal of Good Governance is the certification from SEC, likewise radio licenses from NTC, which we have recently secured and paid around five-point-sixty-five million pesos. Okay, our operational milestone, in nineteen ninety-eight, we got the franchise. Nineteen ninety-nine, we provided uplink services for Channel four, nine, and thirteen to be via satellite. In two oh one, we established the C-band infrastructure of satellite to distribute it to schools. On two oh three, we, in compliance to the franchise section sixteen, we've gone public through the Philippine Stock Exchange. In two oh five, we were awarded national award for most outstanding internet connectivity in rural areas in the Philippines. In two oh one, we were granted by ESI USA a disaster-preminess emergency management project. In twenty nineteen, we have invested and installed a KA band VSAT to cater to less privileged and small home and office use clients. And in twenty twenty, we plan to roll out this VSAT to more areas in the Philippines. So, this is our C-band infrastructure, our VSAT hub provided by ViaSat USA. On the left, lower-left portion, this is an installation in one of the offshore drilling facilities of a drilling company in the Philippines. So, these are seminars that we have conducted through our school network. And this is our coverage, which is the whole Asia and the Philippines. And recently, in twenty nineteen, we have established a KA band VSAT installation. We have invested in this for about two hundred million to provide more affordable services to underserved and unserved areas. So, the coverage of the KA band is through Pacific One Satellite. We have an agreement with Pacific One Satellite, which is the whole Philippines as well, Indonesia, and the Southeast Asian region. So, this is a recent inauguration of the facility in twenty nineteen, graced by NTC and DICT representatives. So, these are some of our installations, recently, we've installed several number of DSWD sites through our local distributors all over the Philippines for the distribution of the, I believe this is for the four-piece distribution. And we have recently also deployed five VSAT sites in Cotanduanes. After the typhoon, we immediately provided five VSAT in, these are the sites, no? Provincial capital, provincial hospital, the district hospital, and the livelihood centers in the area. So, this is very vital for all of these affected families, especially in times of COVID, that we deploy these communication systems so that we enable these COVID centers to report the correct number of COVID-affected Filipinos. So, these are also some of the installations in DSWD, in Leite, in Tawi-Tawi, and if you've seen in front of the temple in Tawi-Tawi, Mindanao. Again, as near as Subik Sambalas, we have to install, even in Antipolo. We have to install VSAT infrastructure in Antipolo because of the bad broadband internet in the area. Okay, on, from twenty twenty-one onwards, we plan to increase our rural and underserved areas to five hundred sites annually. But this year, we have foreseen that we will connect about one thousand five hundred sites because of the, this pandemic has increased the need for satellite connectivity and broadband internet. We are also establishing community Wi-Fi projects under the Piso Wi-Fi to two hundred remote locations in the Philippines. We have formed, as of today, one hundred distribution group of installers through enabling computer shops, enabling internet cafes to be installers and distribution of VSAT broadband connectivity, no? And we also support the government broadband initiatives through the DICT and Public Wi-Fi Project. Thank you, thank you, and mabuhay.
Thank you for your presentation, it's very interesting. Now, since you provide a satellite service, does it mean that in areas without cable, actual cable or fiber connection, they can have internets, they can have an internet service with your satellites?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how many sites? Sokaya?
Yes, ma'am, most of our clients are those underserved and unserved, no fiber and no very bad cellular signal.
That's very good, ilang MBPS ang napaprovidin niyo for internet?
Okay, our minimum MBPS is thirty-five MBPS, that is the minimum. We can provide up to two hundred MBPS. This is only possible because of new satellite technology under the HTS, high-throughput satellite, which is different from any other JEO satellite that is in the market right now.
You know, this is actually a very good technology, especially in our country where there are a lot of places, mountainous areas that are not being reached by these physical cables for connection, especially with distance learning. So, my concern is, in your general information sheet, you have noted that there are foreign nationals, specifically Chinese, involved in the capitalization. What is your capitalization now and who are the owners of your company?
The capitalization now is at three hundred eighty million pesos. Like I mentioned, we are listed in the Philippine Stock Exchange, so the sixty-forty rule is monitored the Philippine Stock Exchange on a monthly basis. And I believe the foreign national that holds shares of TBGI is less than twenty percent.
And do you know what company in China is invested in your company here?
These are not disclosed because these are bought from broker, stockbroker companies.
Oh, they're stocks.
Yes, yes, yes. But this is not just one shareholder, these are multiple shareholders, ranging from, I believe, there are Malaysians, there are Singaporeans, and there are Chinese and of different nationalities, your honor.
And Mr. Sayah, how long have you been in that company?
I've been in the company for twenty years, your honor.
So, I have a question, for example, there's a remote area that's not been reached by the other telecommunications companies and a mayor approaches you and says, you know, this area is unserved, would you be able to erect a satellite? Is that something that you are capable of doing?
Yes, your honor, the satellite installation takes less than one day. The problem with, yes, the problem with our, because Philippines is an archipelagic country, the logistics takes one month.
I agree that, no, but you know what? One month and another day is nothing compared to years.
Yes, your honor.
Them waiting to have a proper connection. Now, and then how do you go about subscribing, let's say it's a town? Can they use their cellphones?
Yes.
You can provide service for that? And how much is the average cost?
Yes, your honor, with the, after the installation, they can put a Wi-Fi router or they can plug in their computer. With the Wi-Fi router, you now access to your mobile phone. All the means of communication through Viber, it can be a Viber text, it can be a Viber call or Messenger or WhatsApp. So, those, all of those applications in your phone will now be enabled through the connectivity through via satellite, no? Our standard rates?
Sir, this is another question, let's say it's a town of one thousand people, can all that thousand people be accommodated?
Yes, yes, your honor, for, we plan to put up a community Wi-Fi project that can distribute the VSAT signal through Wi-Fi signals, so which makes it terrestrially wireless, no? But for individual users, they can put the VSAT in their homes, in their offices, or in the schools.
And what's the range of the satellite? Like, how many kilometers?
It really depends on the terrestrial wireless already, your honor. As for the satellite, it's fixed wireless, no? So, if I put it at home, so, and you put a Wi-Fi in your home, so your whole home is connected through a Wi-Fi signal.
Okay, no, 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 because I'm just trying to determine, let's say we talk about Coron, for example, that's a pretty big island, so would you be able to cover it, how many satellites do you need to be able to cover all those areas there?
Each household will have to have one satellite.
Oh, it's one satellite per household?
Yes, one satellite, the small one.
Okay, how much is that?
Okay, the satellite, we're now selling at eight hundred dollars per satellite. And the monthly bandwidth is around four thousand pesos for a thirty-gig data cap. And unlimited is around seven thousand pesos.
Okay, so if I'm a business, for example, here in my household, can you put a satellite?
Yes, po, yes, po, we can. It so happens that to compare our prices with the fiber in metro cities, it is not competitive. Because the fiber installations are, I mean, there is economies of scale, yes. Unlike our, we drop a satellite in each and every home.
All right, well, that's an interesting possibility because sometimes, like we have like some senators here who have remote places that are not reached by the signal of the, well, the other telcos, so they can probably, we can probably experiment and get one of your satellites and see how that works.
Yes, po, we have installed as far as Batanes. We have, we have in the Samar as well, because it was frequently devastated by typhoon.
So, how many satellites again do you have all over the country?
We have four hundred satellites all over the country.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Amy Marcos. Ma'am, baka kailanganin niyo ng satellites sa Idokos Norte.
Tama, tama, yan, that's what they're interested in. I'm just here to lend support to the efforts of our good chairwoman to push for our better internet connections as well as some of these provincial radio stations that we so dearly need, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Senator Nancy?
Because in one of the slides that they presented, parang they had the plan for five hundred areas to put up satellites. And I think parang five hundred and two hundred, diba yun? Yung future plans yun ang company?
Yes, yes, your honor. This, the new system that we put up last twenty nineteen, we were able to roll it out last August only, last August of twenty twenty because of the pandemic. So, from August twenty twenty up to this time, which is February, about six months, we were able to roll out four hundred sites all over the Philippines in a six-month time.
And if you get another twenty-five years?
We plan to roll out five hundred every year, five hundred to one thousand sites every year.
Okay, ah, siguro, Madam Chair, maybe the company can submit to the committee yung potential areas where they plan to roll out and maybe we can also suggest, lalong-lalo na dun sa mga areas na nahihirapan abutin ng depth ed ngayon para dun sa blended learning nila. Yun lang po, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Following on, Senator Nancy, kung titignan ninyo sa DICT, hindi po kasali ang mga region natin, Region one and two sa plano ng DICT. Kaya, aawit na ako sa iba't ibang maprankisya rito.
Yes, this is a very, as I said, valuable technology to have, especially now. Uh, so we would really appreciate a partnership with a company like that, with a government, to be able to roll out. Um, its uh, distance learning program. So, thank you uh, to the representatives, Mister Saya and Attorney uh, Leonie. Sorry, putol kasi di tinim sa pangalan ninyo. Uh, we we will recommend uh, hopefully to the plenary, uh, the renewal of your franchise. Thank you, so now.
Thank you, Your Honors.
Uh, we shall now move on to the last applicant for the renewal of your franchise, Dito Telecommunity. Uh, may we ask the representatives, Attorney Tamano, or whoever will do a presentation. Uh, first, we would like to hear from Dito, your, an update on your rollout. And then I would like to hear the audit report of KPMG Manabat and Company. And then I would like to hear from the NTC, and then of course from Engineer Gallo. So, we have, we we have a fair amount of time, but I'm sure there will be questions from our senators. So please keep your presentations as concise as possible, thank you. Let's begin now with Dito.
Thank you, uh, Your Honor, Senator Po, and to all the uh, other honorable members of the committee. I am Attorney Tamano, Chief Administrative Officer of Dito. And with me is retired Major General Santiago, who is the Chief uh Technology Officer.
Agadang hapon po, ma'am.
Uh, we thank you for this opportunity to address any questions. Um, in 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 regard to our rollout, Agent Santiago can give you uh, um. Perhaps a a deeper dive, but to to perhaps answer the first questions that uh, the Honorable Senator Po raised earlier. Uh, in regard to our commercial rollout, there was a, there was a question at the onset of today's hearing. As to how many uh, people have already signed up for our subscriptions. Um, and if we may be allowed to provide this information now. Uh, in the one day that we had, one full day that we have uh, have had of a commercial uh rollout in the fifteen cities. In uh, Mindanao and uh, Visayas, we had a total sign up of twenty-two thousand. Fo- seven hundred forty-eight uh persons, um, this is the online sign up. Uh, the qualified, meaning those who uh have compatible phones and are in the proper areas with six thousand five hundred ninety-seven. Which is nearly thirty percent of uh, the total online signups. Now adding to this, the SIM purchases uh from our partner stores and from other digital channels. Uh, as of March nine, uh, eleven fifty-nine PM, we have a total of seven thousand five hundred eighty-six. Uh, in terms of subscribers, of course, uh, that number uh is increasing uh, um, as we speak. Uh, because of the uh, online and the other uh outlets that we have. In regard to rollout, uh, Your Honors, uh, perhaps uh, General Santiago, if you'd like to give an update.
Uh, for for the rollout to meet our um, second year commitment by July of uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we are confident, ma'am, that we can uh, meet the population coverage required of us of fifty-one percent. Because right now, we're we're nearing forty-five percent population coverage. And that uh, we are very aggressive in our 5G rollout that uh. Would allow us to maintain um, the fifty-five uh MBPS minimum average broadband speed.
So basically what you're saying, um, Mister Santiago, is that you've actually surpassed. The thirty-seven percent coverage that you initially committed to, am I correct?
Ye- ye- yes, ma'am, uh, for uh, for our first year commitment, uh, what what we have uh sent. Uh, reported to NTC is the, is the thirty-seven point uh forty-eight uh percent population coverage, um. Uh, to meet our first year commitment. Um, however, in our internal simulation conducted after the testing, we're. We we uh, determined that we're more than forty percent already, and right now, we are uh. Uh, approaching the forty-five percent population coverage.
Well, that's good news, um, about my question on uh, the compatibility with. All the different phones, so what's the issue there? Why why can't you be compatible with all types of phones?
Ma- ma'am, siguro po, I I I should clarify that the compatibility list, those uh models. Uh, that were included in our compatibility list. Have undergone uh, a collaborative, meaning uh, with the manufacturers, a collaborative uh. Uh, test o- o- of of it, of their compatibility to our network. And uh, be- because this is collaborative, um, we are assured that the manufacturers. Are confident that they're, that the brands that that have undergone this testing are one hundred percent compatible.
Okay, I I see the hand of, uh, hold on Mister Santiago, I'm sorry, I see the hand of uh Engineer Gala. You, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, ma'am, I'm I'm actually uh, I'm actually surprised uh, that Dito Telecommunity uh restricted their. Uh, restricted their list, I mean, it's a pretty restrictive list on their website with regard to what phones are compatible. The reason why, the reason why there is this question with regard to compatibility. Is because of the type of frequencies that were licensed to Dito Telecommunity, right? Uh, they do not have nine hundred megahertz, they do not have eighteen hundred megahertz, and these are the workhorse frequencies for 2G. What they do have are frequencies for 3G, LTE, 4G, uh, and 5G, uh, thirty-five hundred megahertz, they have that already. Now, phones that are older than uh, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, about that time. Will probably not be compatible uh, these smartphones, because they do not carry a technology known as voice over LTE. But phones that are, the smartphones that are newer now, have that technology, so so there's really not much to worry about. What we need to worry about, however, is that the feature phone market in the Philippines, meaning they are not smartphones. Is still very high in the country, and typically, uh, they only have. Lalo na yung mga, those ones used by our uh kababayan, so our socioeconomic class D and E. These are the, as, these are the dumb phones, the feature phones that only run on 2G frequencies. So, they are about sixty percent pa rin of our population. We they, we cannot expect them to be able to access the frequencies that realize, the frequencies and technology that were licensed to Dito Telecommunity. So, um, to your question, ma'am, uh, about compatibility, it's nothing to worry about if you're using a smartphone. But if you're not using a smartphone, then uh, there's an issue there.
Your Honor, if I may, I just add.
Yeah, but how how will you rectify that? Because you know, when you, when you speak of underserved and unserved areas. A lot of those belong to a demographic that might not be able to afford a smartphone. So how do you plan to provide service in those areas if their phones aren't compatible? So do we end there? Uh, Engineer Gala again.
Uh, ma'am, unfortunately, that cannot be answered by Dito Telecommunity. For as long as Globe and Smart have uh, essentially a duopoly over nine hundred and eighteen hundred megahertz, right? And uh, as I've, as I've informed the Chair so many times before, until we have a spectrum management reform. Uh, that that means that the NTC will be able to uh clawback and then reassign. For frequencies to be more equitably assigned to those who will use them, we will be, we will remain in this situation. So that's a matter for a lot of reforms down the line that I'm, that the Chair is aware of.
But um, how much, um, Engineer Gala, how much now is the most, or maybe the cheapest uh smartphone? That will be compatible with Dito?
Uh, off the top of my head, ma'am, there's already, there's already some in the. I am speaking, ma'am, as a, as somebody who sometimes assembles his own uh, cellphones. Uh, you can get one for approximately two thousand, three thousand, even less. Uh, the the technology is getting cheaper by the day. So that, uh, if forha- if perhaps Dito Telecommunity will uh review some of the. Uh, subsidize metho- subsidize uh programs that they have deployed in India by uh Reliance Jio. Or by DTAC in Thailand, they can probably offer it for cheap.
Okay, um, I understand what you're saying, this is a whole range of reforms that need to be undertaken. But um, we don't want to punish a company who's coming in without the same pool and resources as the other ones. Um, so, as you're, you're right, it could be probably a subsidized partnership. Uh, we have Cherry, Cherry Mobile, um, one of, one of these co- uh companies that are less expensive. But let's say those with an iPhone, cause I don't think you mentioned it as part of the ones that are available, will they be able to use Dito?
I believe, ma'am, the iPhone can, there's there's no, there's nothing stopping an iPhone user from using uh, their technologies. In fact, the iPhone of two generations ago was already ready for this technol- for the frequencies and the technology that's.
Because uh, Engineer Gala, hindi ko siya dun sa listahan ng Dito, I don't think they mentioned uh, the Apple gadgets eh. Uh, was there reason for that?
Ma'am, I don't know why they, I don't know why they made it restrictive, when in fact.
Your Honor, if if we may, um, that's just a partial list. And the the reasoning behind it, uh, uh, General Santiago will give the technical reason. But the, more the commercial reason is because we want to protect the consumers from not wasting their money. We don't want them to waste their money, buy our SIMs, buy our services, and they cannot fully utilize their phones because of a phone compatibility. The partial list that we have provided are these are um, phones in which we as a company have had extensive testing. Uh, as well as coordination with these handset, handset manufacturers. Uh, so that they can fully optimize the use of the Dito phone.
Yeah, you explained that earlier, Attorney.
If you want to add to that.
Go ahead, Attorney Santiago, uh, Mr. Santiago.
Ha, ha, ma- ma'am, uh, yung pong compatibility list namin, uh, uh. Ano lang po yon, it is a list, sabi ko nga po kaninang, kanina, earlier, that. Uh, those that have undergone a collaborative test with the manufacturers. To to provide both the manufacturer and Dito, the confidence that there will be no technical issue. If if a subscriber will use those phones. Uh, yung pong wala sa list, hindi po namin sinasabi that they're not uh compatible. But what what we're saying is that, hindi po ito nag- undergo ng collaborative test with the manufacturer. And therefore, uh, to protect the public, there may be technical issues that are unforeseen. Uh, at uh, we we just wanted to say na, nag-a- undergo pa rin po kami ng collaborative testing. Para ma-expand yung uh, yung mga models na nandun po sa compatibility list namin.
Okay, as long as we know that's open-ended, and it doesn't mean that if they're not on the pri- uh, the primary list, that it's not compatible. Now, is it true, uh, wait, if I want to get a a Dito SIM, where can I get it?
Uh, there are two ways to get it, Your Honor, um, first, uh, offline, meaning to go to uh, one of the uh, currently, one of the ten uh. Outlets that are open in uh Visayas, in Mindanao, or through online. Now, we encourage online, of course, because uh, online, we go through a series of questions, uh, in order to find out. Number one, is your um, phone compatible? Number two, is your phone SIM locked? Number three, uh, is your phone blacklisted? And number four, whether or not you are in the uh, the 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 fifteen cities uh, that are part of the commercial launch.
Then you can do it, you can, you can do it online, Attorney?
Uh, we we are actually encouraging people to do it online, uh.
But do you have it like, do you have it in SM outlets?
Uh, yes, I can provide the ten outlets, um, in which they are available, Your Honors. Uh, I know it's.
Okay, so, when, when, when you say that it's available in SM, it's actually your Dito physical store, am I correct?
Uh, no, these are through our uh, our uh handset partners, uh, so. We will be having Dito signis- signature stores opened, uh, perhaps in a month or, in a month or so.
What do you mean, what do you mean handset partners? So let's say Samsung, ganon?
Uh, yes, yes, that that those would be.
Handset vendors.
That's a handset, right? Okay, so, but it's only the Samsung being sold in an SM, how about the other ones?
Uh, well, these are the, as of right now, these are the ten partner stores in which it's available, Your Honor.
Okay.
I I can provide the list if you would like, I can read it now.
Can you read, can you read them quickly?
Sure, uh, Your Honor, uh, in Visayas, it is available in SM Consulasyon. Uh, in, uh, it's also available in SM City Cebu, in Gaisano Grand Mandawe Centro. In SM City Cebu, and also Ayala Center Cebu Business Park. In Mindanao, uh, sorry, uh.
No, go ahead, Mindanao.
Your Honor, yeah, uh, it is available in Gaisano Mall of Davao, as well as SM EcoLand and City Mall, Your Honor.
Okay, that's good, at least, you know, they're ma- different outlets, they're not just one company, uh, one type of mall, okay? Um, let me go now to the NTC with your report, and then later on, KPMG Manabat. And then, of course, uh, we go back to uh, the arbiter, Engineer Gal. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, uh, good morning again, uh, Madam Chair. Um, can I ask Deputy Commissioner Caballeros to discuss the results of the audit of uh, our independent auditor, Your Honors?
Yes, please, uh, you said Caballeros?
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Your Honors, uh, good afternoon. Um, based on the um, uh, technical audit, uh, conducted by RGMNAP and and the company. Um, the uh, Dito has uh covered the thirty-seven point four eight percent. Of uh, the population, based on the twenty fifteen um, um, sensors connected by PSA. And the um, download, average medium download speed, uh, Your Honors. Uh, the average for 4G is eighty-five point nine MBPS, and for 5G is five hundred seven point. Uh, fifty MBPS, and um. These are uh, higher than the commitment for the first year, uh, Your Honor. So, uh, the um, company, Dito Telecom, Telecommunities Corporation, Your Honor, has uh. Uh, complied with its first year uh, commitment, uh, Your Honor. The uh, test was uh, conducted, uh, uh. Using this one thousand six hundred two uh, cell sites uh, that were operational. Uh, when the test was conducted, uh, Your Honor. And uh, and they have used uh, uh, the the uh. The procedure uh, uses based on uh, uh, Philippine Standards for Related Services, uh, Rule forty-four hundred. And uh, um, they have, uh, according to the auditor, you know, they have. They have uh, religiously complied with the rules on uh, the conduct of technical uh, audit, uh, Your Honors. And um, based on the reports, Your Honor, uh, Dito Telecommunity Corporation is on track. And the second audit, Your Honor, is scheduled uh, this coming July, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, for the second year. And we expect uh, uh, that uh, they will be moving faster in the rollout. Because by the time, there will be mo- there will be users ready in the network. And uh, the uh, result of the speed may vary already, uh, Your Honor. Because first year, there are still no subscribers using the network. So uh, most of the uh, of the frequencies that are used are used in the audit, in the test itself. So, mataas po yung lubabas, but uh, once there are already users in the system. Which we expect by July of this year, uh. If they cannot put up more infrastructure, they may not be able to, to uh. Uh, provide that fifty-five MBPS, but if they continue, uh, the uh, the pace that they are going, uh, building the infrastructure. They may be able to uh, to uh, uh, meet the fifty-five MBPS uh, minimum average speed, Your Honor. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
So in summary, yung sa Cabayo, sinasabi ninyo na yung mga pinangako nila ay nadeliver naman nila dito sa rollout na to?
Yung first year commitment, uh your honor, yes.
Sorry, first year, okay. Because yun yung siyempre basis natin for the renewal. Moving forward, of course, is another challenge. Uh we need to craft the franchise agreement in such a way that they will have to continuously honor their commitments moving forward. Okay, um let me ask uh uh thank you again, Yusek Caballeros, K P M G?
Yes, your honors, um good afternoon, everyone. Um I'm Jaleen Mandike. So maybe just to quickly introduce myself, I'm one of the partners of K P M G, R G Manabat and Company. So my area of expertise, or one of my area of expertise is really on technology, um risk and insurance engagements. And part of it is doing technical audit, um attestation, and also agreed-upon procedures. Now, um I di- I don't have any presentation, but I echo uh what uh Depcom Egay presented. So um that is the result of the independent audit in the conduct of specified procedures. Um based on the first year uh delivery um of Dito and to their level of service, your honors.
Okay, um let me go through the checklist of Dito. And I want you to confirm if they've actually delivered on that.
Sure, Madam Chair.
Okay. They said uh double download speeds by one year of operations and quadruple it by year two and achieve eighty-four percent population coverage by twenty twenty-five. I know uh that we're ahead of uh, we're 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 moving uh too much ahead of this uh commitment uh schedule, but are they on track uh to be able to deliver that? Or if not, what are the obstacles?
Yes, your honor. So, um we can only provide in terms of the result or the factual findings based on year one audit. And based, as mentioned by Depcom Egay, they were able to meet the um committed level of service, specifically on national population coverage and the minimum broadband speed.
Okay, so, uh here here it is, thirty-seven point three percent of the population coverage. They said they surpassed that, am I correct?
Um the one in the memorandum circular, your honors, would be thirty-seven point zero three percent, to be exact. And they were able to achieve thirty-seven point forty-eight percent. And that's also based on the um Form A that they have submitted to um N T C.
Okay, next, minimum average broadband speed of twenty-seven M B P S. Were they able to reach that?
Um yes, your honor. So um, so we covered uh four G and five G pursuant as well to the C P C N. And uh the coverage for this um test, so they were able to achieve eighty-five point nine uh M B P S for four G for four G and five hundred seven point five M B P S for five G sites.
Okay, um their operation um expense, capex, opex, opex in billion is about a hundred fifty billion. Uh did you cover this in your audit report?
Not on this year of um test, uh Madam Chair, because for you, they are not commercially live yet. And the only um level of service that we tested for year one are the two. So national population coverage and the minimum broadba- uh average broadband speed. So that will be subject in future audit.
Um what is the, uh uh for Dito, what is your debt to equity ratio now?
Yeah, uh your honors, um we have, we uh we can present that if if you'd like us to present the uh debt to equity ratio. It's about seventy-two percent to twenty-eight percent. So it's a very healthy Yes, it's a very healthy debt to equity ratio, uh your honor. Yeah, it's uh sorry, uh to correct, to correct, it's seventy-seven percent uh is to twenty-three percent. For this type of industry, your honor, which is uh capex intensive, that's a quite a healthy uh standard, your honor.
So your debt is about seventy-seven percent. And then about twenty-three percent is your equity.
Yes, your honor.
Um well, I know that this is um capital intensive, but earlier, uh Commissioner Cordoba is requiring a different ratio for the broadcast uh industry. So, Mister Cordoba, do you have an exception when it comes to that?
Um your your honors, I think um maybe Attorney Tamano is stating their current debt to equity. What we have is the um they submitted po kasi every April, so what we have is their um twenty nineteen debt equity. We'll, we're still going to receive their twenty twenty debt equity. As of um twenty nineteen po, uh their debt to equity ratio is eight point zero two percent to ninety-one point ninety-eight percent. So maybe they can, they can improve before they submit to us, your honors.
Oh, so before, last year, eight percent lang in debt nila.
Ano po, um ano po ito, as of twenty nineteen, all the financial statements which we receive uh twenty twenty, your honors. And then yung pong twenty twenty, they will submit it uh this twenty twenty-one.
And and maybe the rea- because the reason for that, obviously, they use that capital to be able to roll out.
They're already rolling out. Uh ano po, tama po kayo, eight percent, uh eight point zero two percent uh to ninety-one point ninety-eight percent, your honors.
Okay, um now, maybe, thank you for the presentation, uh Mister Jaleen. Yes, um any questions from, before we go to Engineer Gala? I think that we have a majority leader.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mister Madam Chair, thank you very much. Yeah, first of all, on the onset, I'd like to congratulate Dito Telco for launching in Mindanao and the Visayas. Um you know, uh I've always said this, that whenever I go home to Mindanao, uh we're always in a twilight zone when it comes to connectivity. And you know, I'm here now in Cagayan de Oro and I'm gonna go to Bukidnon, many parts of Bukidnon are completely offline. Uh particularly in our farm in San Miguel in uh Maramag, Bukidnon, I have to find a particular Santol tree which I stand under. And that's the only, natatawa si Mamaymi, but it's true, that's the only uh site I have a signal in and uh we have no other signal. So when I'm there, and I don't know why, whenever I'm in Bukidnon, in my hometown, in my, in in the farm of my dad, uh so many people are trying to get in touch with me, and that's the time I'm no connection whatsoever. And um so we welcome a third player to come in as uh dedicated and as aggressive, no? As a matter of fact, I had an opportunity to speak to uh the heads of Dito, and I said, "Why don't you make it like what you did with Phoenix?" No, I spoke to Mister Denisoo, and I said, "Phoenix Oil became a big player because they concentrated on all areas of Mindanao with their uh with their uh fuel uh uh distribution system. So they could do the same uh for Visayas and Mindanao, and then, of course, go up to uh Metro Manila." I just have a question. Um I know you, you uh rolled out in the Visayas and Mindanao, why particular, what particular reason for that, uh Attorney Tamano?
Uh thank you so much, uh Senator Miggs. Um so, two reasons eh uh. The first, of course, uh is, if you look in, we first, we wanted to be really uh different, right? The other companies, when they, when they do roll out, they always start with N C R. But we wanted to show that we're a different company. So we rolled out first in the areas that we believe are underserved, uh and and this is Visayas and Mindanao. Uh there's also the sentimental reason, uh your honor, that uh you know, uh one of the main shareholders of Dito is Udena, and it's a Davao company. And in fact, before we started out, before we became Dito, Dito was Mindanao Islamic Telephone uh company. And our purpose under that franchise was really to serve the underserved Muslim areas in Mindanao. So we wanted to be very true to that. Uh the the second point, really, it's a commercial decision that we, we wanted to um uh it was deemed by our commercial team that it's best to start in these fifteen cities. But please, please do rest assured, uh your honor, that uh we will reach uh Bukidnon, we will reach Metro Manila, Beris, uh your honor.
Yes, uh do you have a plan on on reaching uh the N C R as well and uh Luzon? Do you have a timeline for that as well?
Yes, your honor. By May or June, we will already be in uh in in N C R.
So how many cell towers have you set up already, uh there, Tamano, for Dito? I know you have a, I know it's a joint towers, right? These are joint towers. So how many have you set up jointly or or have already been set up privately by Dito?
Your honor, we'll let our um chief techno- uh technology officer answer that. Thank you.
Uh, uh Ma- Madam Chair, uh Senator Subiri, uh good morning po, uh good afternoon po, uh yung own built po namin is uh already more than two thousand two hundred. Uh that's why I said uh we're on track o- on achieving our uh second year commitment. Uh because
That's a lot, huh? That's a lot, in one year's time? Uh year and a half? Two thousand?
Almost year and a half, um almost year and a half. And uh we we have contracts with several independent tower companies. Uh we we don't know whether they have uh yung mga pinagawa po namin sa kanila na mga tower will have uh the the second tenant. But uh we are the their first tenants. Uh they are now aggressively uh uh doing their own role rollout. And I I think about fifty uh of uh fifty towers have already been uh completed by these four independent tower companies. So this is in addition to what we have uh already built.
So, um uh so Madam Chair, for Dito, they already had a soft launching uh March eighth. In this soft launching, what is the, uh with those who have been able to buy your Dito uh phones and uh service? Um how was it? Mabilis ba ang speed? Mabagal ba? Ano bang naka-four G ba? Five G? Ano bang services na ibigay mo dun sa mga nauna nakabilang Dito?
Uh your honors, please, uh we actually have, if if the honorable Chair and the committee will allow, we actually have a very short presentation on the, on the speeds and the service that we were able to provide uh in Cebu uh and Davao. Uh with your permission, your honor, if we if we may um be allowed to, uh
But but basically po, your honor, ano, uh it reflects the result of the technical audit.
Yeah.
Let's see the presentation, yeah. Would you like to see it?
Thank you, thank you, your honor. So ahead, please go ahead. Your honors, are you able to see our presentation?
Yes, yes, we do.
Yes, your honor, um ito po ay hindi naman, ano, hindi po ito scientific. Uh so, nag-nagkaroon lang po ng random testing uh uh comparing our indoor and outdoor tester salts in the ten uh cities uh uh in Cebu or in the Visayas that uh is covered by our commercial loan. So, okay, please uh So ito po ay uh sa Cebu City, yung outdoor niya is uh one fourteen, at yung indoor niya, which is in S M City Cebu is seventy-four M B P S. In Mandawe, uh it is fifty-five M B P S outdoor and thirty-three M B P S indoor in Gaisano Mall. Next. In Consulacion, it is one hundred eighteen i- in in an outdoor uh site and ninety-three point nine M B P S in N C- S M Consulacion. While in Naga City, the ou- outdoor, outdoor is fifty-one and the indoor in Metro Market is twenty-eight. While in Talisay, the outdoor is eighty-four, while the indoor in Gaisano Grand Fiesta Mall is thirty-six M B P S. In Liloan, the outdoor is thirty-eight, and the indoor is nineteen in Gaisano Grand Mall. So those are uh a, just a sample of o- o- of the speed tests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I continue, Madam Chair, with the the some questions? Um just for clarification. So, uh looks like uh it was success, a success in these areas, uh gentlemen. How about your, what are your, what packages do you give to uh to your uh consumers? Do you have like packages, like what they do with Globe and Smart, uh Unli uh uh internet, and all these package A, package B, all these to get enticed to to invest in? Would the Dito also have the same setup?
Uh yes, your honor. Uh we actually made it very simple. We have one welcome package. It's one hundred ninety-nine. Uh allow us to say that it is the true Unli. Uh and General Santiago will uh explain why it's it's true Unli. In the, in the network areas that we have, you will have um unlimited SIM uh Dito-to-Dito calls and unlimited Dito-to-Dito text, but in terms of data, it is uh truly unlimited.
That's unlimited, no data cap, no, no speed cap and no data cap.
That's for one hundred ninety-nine pesos, your honor.
Wow, is that uh for real? One hundred ninety-nine pesos for real?
But to be clear, it's a promo, uh your honor, it's uh for thirty days.
Uh for thirty days? And natatawa din si Commissioner Cordoba, kasi al- kasi kung, kung hindi mo sinabi promo, baka baka singilin kayo ng N T C. But you know, that's a great promo, even if it's for thirty days. I mean, that's uh, that's something that they can use, especially this time of online learning. So, uh finally, um what's your targeted market share, gentlemen? You want to uh initially get how much of the market uh in how many years?
Your honor, we do have uh uh projections on this, but these are are very conservative. Um our end goal is to have at least more than thirty percent of market share. Uh we believe that um, if if I may, uh just a little bit addition to that, your honor, um we believe with our business model, actually, uh by the third year of operations in terms of EBITDA, we will already be positive. And in the fifth year of our operations, we would ha- we would be cumul- cumulative positive EBITDA. Meaning that by that time, by the fifth year, we would have paid off our loans. Uh and we are running into true profitability. So allow us to say that the business model is there uh and we are aggressively going to run after uh that market share, your honor.
Thank you. My final word lang, uh Madam Chair is I hope that they continue to pursue their aggressiveness in being able to put up uh the networks all over Mindanao and the Visayas. Kami dito, uha kami, Madam Chair, sa signal. I mean, I have one, and I won't anymore mention which one. But um when I leave Cagayan, not even Cagayan de Oro, when I leave my house here, thirty minutes out going towards Bukidnon, we're still in Cagayan de Oro, I have no signal, completely no signal. Until I hit another town of Bukidnon, a big town, that's the only time we have signal. And then when you leave that town again, you have no signal. Imagine, if you get stuck in the middle of nowhere, you have no way of communicating to the outside world. So we really need uh particularly in our areas in Mindanao and the Visayas, we really need an additional backup, additional uh network that can uh be a bit aggressive. Uh I don't know why, whenever I see our friends of the other two networks, I always tell them, add more towers. All of a sudden, wala na na nangyayari. I mean, with all due respect to them, I have not seen any new towers being built at this point in time servicing these particular areas. They like to limit it to uh ur- urban centers. So, uh my my appeal to Dito as the third player, please do what you did with uh Phoenix, which basically saturated the whole Mindanao area and Visayas area. And uh do the same for your cell towers. I think that's the way you can get more of the market share, because really connectivity is the key. Uh the services come second, but it's connectivity. If they don't have your service there, you won't be able to to sell your uh product to the people. So, um congratulations to their launch, Madam Chair, and I think we really need a a new player at this point in time. I think our friends in Smart and in Globe, uh they're friends of ours, they're very close friends of ours. But yet, they slack, they, there was a bit of slacking in terms of expansion, I think, if you ask me, Madam Chair. Even in Metro Manila, we still have several drop calls. I can tell you exactly, Madam Chair, from my house to the Senate, when I'm talking on the phone, I know exactly when my calls will drop, you know, and and I don't know why. I'm sure the owners pass in the same places too, but I don't know why they'd ever improve on it. So, um you know, out of sheer frustration So, um, you know, out of cheerful frustration, sometimes, uh, all the, um, explicit language you say in the car because you know, you, you need to make important calls and yet the, the drops, the phone drops on you. So yes, Madam Chair, it's also good to have a decent and a real, uh, competition in place so that, uh, they're always, um, on their toes, uh, coming up with new technology and, uh, expansion of their areas. So thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for the opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you, Majority Leader, uh, Subiri. Actually, maybe you can ask the Trans-Pacific Broadband Corporation that has those satellite technology to put in your, uh, remote areas in Bukinon, uh, they can also help, I suppose. Okay.
Yes, that would be a big help, big help.
Oh, before we go to Engineer Gala, Gala, I have a question. At least two LGUs have issued stop orders and complaints against the illegal construction of cell sites. Um, although in Bayamihan two, we already streamlined the process. One thing that we cannot get rid of because of safety is the building permit. Apparently, um, you have in Bakolong City an issue because, uh, you did not have the corresponding building permit. And you also had one in Malabon City LGU for the illegal construction because again, you had no building permit. Can you clarify that, please?
Your honors, uh, when it comes to the issue of building permits, um, we do always remind our, uh, contractors and subcontractors that they must be fully compliant with all, um, requirements before building the, the towers. Um, and so at least as a policy of Dito, uh, we push for full compliance, uh, in, in regard to building of towers. John Santiago, do you have any comments on this?
Uh, in our contract with our, uh, full turnkey vendors, that is one of our requirement that, uh, a- a- any, any construction, uh, before any construction is, uh, going to start, that all of the required, uh, permits and licenses are secured, uh. So, um, in, in these two areas that have been mentioned, ma'am, uh, we, we have, uh, also directed our vendors to address, uh, to address these issues and, uh, um, I, I, I think, um, there were already updates, uh, that were provided to us by our vendors.
Okay, uh, the important thing, of course, is the reputation also of your company. So make sure that you hire subcontractors that actually follow rules, um, or so, so that you're not misrepresented. So hopefully you can resolve those two issues because there are obviously, um, possible, uh, potential clients there that need your service.
Thank you, honors.
So just update that, update us on that. So may we ask now Engineer Gala for your present, much awaited presentation.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. With your permission, I will start sharing the screen.
Committee Secretary, please.
Uh, okay, here we go. Uh, this is the, this is the presentation that I was asked to, uh, in, with regard to reviewing the Dito Telecommunity Technical Audit Report. Uh, we correlated the far, the following spreadsheets. The original Form A downloaded, uh, from the NTC website, which was uploaded back in 2018. Uh, the estimated barangays covered file that was, that's supposed to be on 2020/12/29. I cannot vouch for the, for the truth of this, uh, Excel file, ma'am, but uh, let's treat it as what it is because it correlates against the PDF report that was submitted to your office, the Dito Audit Report. I must caution you, however, Madam Chair, that, uh, we had to manually review this because the, it was manually scanned and, uh, we, I think we lost several pages in the file. I don't know if the, the, the pages are in the actual submission to you, but I will present the effect of that later. So items of significance that we found, the audit KPMG reported 1602 cell sites, which, uh, the, the actual field audit that they performed was 200 or about 12%. There were nine cell site test, uh, test points, three near, three middle, and three far. Uh, this is the caveat I was mentioning earlier. The auditor reported that there was a Form A coverage of 8,860 barangays, but in our manual review, we only found 848 barangays or a vari- variance of 12. The auditor reported Form A population coverage of 37 point, uh, 37,851,953 or 37.48, uh, population coverage. In our manual review, we were only able to check 37,540,926 or 37.18%. This is still much higher than, uh, this is still significantly higher than the original Form A that was submitted with 37.03%. So in this error, please note, uh, in this report, please note we have a potential error of 0.82%. With regard to the results, using the manual review as base data, we see that there's a net increase of 3.38% in barangay coverage as they correctly reported. But the actual year one population increase based on the TOR, for TOR points is only 0.15%. So this essentially means that there's not much difference between what they promised and what was amended. Uh, the detailed changes, uh, they pretty much stuck to their original promises. 68.80, 68.11% of the original year one barangays still appear in the amended, in the amended Form A, while only 31.89, uh, 31.89% uh, do not appear in the amended Form A. There are, uh, 11,761, 900, 761,102 who are not in the original year one but are in the amended year one. So there's not much difference. It's only an 11.65% population difference, uh, population affected. Based on their field audit results, the target intended, uh, per Form A, the barangays Form A, uh, 8,844, the actual results reflect 2,671 barangays. Or in other words, the field audit was able to capture 30.2% of barangays. When it comes to population, the actual audited is 15,149,502 or 40.35% uh, coverage. Uh, it, this means that unlike, unlike what was intended during the crafting of the Terms of Reference, uh, we did not do a, we did not do a one is to one check in the, in terms of what barangays were covered and what barangays were not. So, uh, with regard further correlation errors in the manual review, in the spreadsheet that was sent to us, we saw about 30 barangays that were not, that were not in the Excel spreadsheet sent to us, but we saw them in the printout of the, uh, audit report. So we're seeing an equivalent population variance of 0.32%. So it does not affect, uh, it does not affect the overall, uh, the overall review. So our opinions, on the approval of the NTC of an amended Form A, uh, Dito Telecommunity appears to have an increased committed year one population coverage. The manual review shows an increase of 0.15% or an increased population coverage of 150,000. The actual increase should be slightly greater because of the, uh, variance of 12 barangays that we could not find. So there's about 311,000, uh, population that we, we did not see and probably should, should be reflected in the, in a 100% review. The increasing coverage will probably not affect the score for year one in the original commitment. So we recommend that the NTC should publish the amended and approved Form A. We can, we can then compare, uh, actually, what is the difference between, uh, Form A year one, original Form A, uh, year one amended, Form A year two, uh, original Form A, year two amended, and so on. So we will be able to compare and we will see, uh, how much improvement is going to be there based on their score or if there's no difference in their score at all. On the approval of the NTC of a use of a sampling in the independent audit, the intent of the Form A document was to be the single source of truth against which the performance of the winning bidder was supposed to be measured. The intent of the stakeholders regarding the technical audit was it was supposed to be a compliance check against the promises of Dito Telecommunity. So based on the manual review, we only were able to see the performance of 262,671 barangays out of 8,844. So there's a field audit coverage of about 40.35%. So we recommend that empty the section 13, which specifies the procedure to select the independent auditor and the procedure by which the auditor is going to go about doing the audit, covered, of all barangays covered by year two as presented by the amended Form A. And we, we recommend that a sampling method should not be applied. Uh, having said that, I would like to congratulate, I would like to congratulate KPMG at this point for an excellent performance of, uh, their audit. They performed their audit, uh, precisely to what was, uh, specified by the audit parameters. They did really well. And, um, we hope that if they are chosen to, uh, to be the auditor for year two, they do the same, they, they, they provide the same rigor in terms of their audit. But this time, please, let's not, let's not use sampling because the sampling was not intended by the stakeholders during the crafting of the original TOR. On the results of the independent audit themselves, uh, the year one committed speed in the original Form A submission was 27, um, megabits per second. The average speed that we determined from review of independent results is 160.43 Mbps. Uh, the average speed for 4G implementation was 87.32. Average speed for 5G implementation is 356.96 Mbps. Please note, uh, this is the result of an unloaded network. So results will probably be different during actual commercial operation of the network. And, uh, we, we congratulate Dito Telecommunity for actually performing uh, six times better than what was promised. But of course, this is unloaded. We have yet to see what we, how Dito Telecommunity will perform with a loaded network. We recommend that the NTC should publish a clean copy of their technical audit report on their website so that the public will be able to see for themselves, uh, what the results are. That's it, Madam Chair. Uh, I, if you want, if you want me to go to the details of the spreadsheet for the 15, for the 15 cities in the barangays that were covered, I can do that, but it's probably not, it's probably not going to, you know, we don't need to take out a lot of your time.
No, first of all, I would like to manifest for the record our sincere gratitude to Engineer Gala for this presentation. This is an independent body that did an audit. Uh, ito talaga 'yung ginawa para sa bayan. And napuyat si Engineer Gala this weekend. He's not even a consultant in our committee. Um, maybe the majority leader can increase our budget a bit so we can, uh, give a proper compensation for those that are really working hard for this. I will petition for that. Um, there's so many consultants for public services because it's, it's a very vast, uh, concern of a committee. And, and banking also is also very technical for me. But Engineer Gala, thank you very much, uh, for your, well, for your very fair assessment and also for acknowledging KPMG Manabat. It's a very reputable company, KPMG. It's a, it's an international company, so they're not only answerable to the stakeholders here but abroad because they're also audited as an auditing company. So, uh, thank you very much for that presentation, Engineer Gala. So when, when we talk about the deliverables, it seems that Engineer Gala is also in agreeance that Dito Telecommunity has actually delivered. There are some variances, there are some differences, but it's very little compared to what you were actually able to roll out, the, the, uh, the rollout. As, as we mentioned and we have just to, um, classify that these are unloaded uh, as, uh, Engineer Gala mentioned. Hindi pa kasi talaga nag full commercial rollout. Kaya 'yung speed pwede pang mag-iba. On the other hand, at least it's already there. We were able to show that. So when I defend this franchise before the body, I can say that this was actually also audited by an independent advocacy group. Hindi lamang, hindi lamang 'yung sariling, hindi lamang NTC at hindi lamang 'yung auditor hired by Dito. But I hope Dito you continue your relationship with, uh, KPMG um, for your next audit sometime, I think in July, for your other rollout. Uh, that will be very helpful for consistency. Um, are there any questions from our senators present or the Senator Bongbawati, uh, manifest?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. If I may, I just want to manifest my intent to support these, uh, measures which will greatly, uh, beneficial for our country. Fellow colleagues here in the Senate, our resource persons, and everyone in attendance. A pleasant morning to, uh, afternoon to all of you. Madam Chair, our constitution recognizes the role of communication and information in nation building. Right? So these two elements play a crucial role in saving countless lives amidst all the calamities that have stricken the country. Mula sa sunog, bagyo, at kahit saang pandemya, ating kinakarap ngayon, kailangan po ang interconnected at well-informed ang mga Pilipino upang makapaghanda ng maayos at makaiwas sa anumang peligro. Ito mismo ang aking relaksasyon habang nag-iikot sa bansa, habang tumutulong sa ating mga kababayan na nasasalanta ng iba't ibang sakula. Let me stress that the applicants, uh, uh, that the applicants in today's hearing like Dito Telecommu- Telecommunity assist the government and its people through means of telecommunication since, uh, connectivity and access to information is of public importance, especially during this trying times. I would like to commend the efforts and sincerity of Dito, the country's, uh, third, uh, telecom player in improving connectivity in the Philippines. Despite economic turmoil caused by COVID-19, Dito was recently able to fulfill its commitment to the government of providing internet coverage to 37% of the Philippine population with a minimum average broadband speed of 27 Mbps. Uh, Dito is now preparing for a full rollout, making, uh, information dissemination in our country through telecommunication more efficient and stable. To the respective, uh, management of our legislative franchise applicants, always keep in mind that the issuance of a franchise is not the end of the story, rather it is only the beginning. I implore you to fulfill your promises to the nation, especially since you are engaged in public service. Your franchise is not a right but a mere privilege that can be revoked once you violate your undertakings. Malaki po ang tiwala namin dito sa Senado at ng lahat ng mga Pilipino na makakatulong kayo sa tuloy-tuloy na pag-unlan ng ating bayan. In addition, uh, Madam Chair, I would like also to reiterate my earlier support for the broadcasting franchise applicants like the city government of Davao, uh, and 'yung pong, uh, private entities like Palawan Broadcasting Corporation, Holyn Broadcasting Enterprises Incorporated, and Baycombs Broadcasting Corporation for their dedication to public service. We thank the committee, uh, for its, uh, support to these, uh, measures. Maraming salamat po, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes, uh, Senator Subiri?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I may have to leave because I have to join the Commission Appointments Hearing.
Me too.
Uh, yeah, so I move, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, that, uh, these, uh, measures be, uh, put forth on plan already and approved on committee level, Madam Chair. Congratulations to them.
Thank you. Congratulations and thank you again to our resource persons, especially attorney, as, naging attorney na rin, si Engineer Gala. Maraming salamat po, maraming, talaga, alam mo, napaka-technical nitong bagay na to. We need somebody we can trust to really look into this honestly and fairly. And, and you've done so. This is a service to your country and your country. This is a service to your country and your country, man. Thank you. Um, and also to Dito Telecommunications and all the other franchises, congratulations. This, uh, hearing is now adjourned.
Thank you, ma'am. Salamat po.
Thank you.